Mr. Chairman, we are live. We have a new system, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Today is April 26th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time, I would please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dave. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Is there any additions or corrections?
I would like to make an addition. The recycling center in McCall, I'm working on trying to get that ready to go for local housing. And one of the very first steps is a sewer modeling with the Payette Lakes Recreational Water and Sewer District. I have an application filled out to complete that. It takes about a month to do it. And it does require $750. I would like to request that we move forward on this quickly so that we can see what we can do on that parcel. It will very likely then require a rezone on it, so.
In city rezon.
Yeah.
And we can add stuff to the agenda if it's an emergency? That's the rub. So this would be a non-action item?
No, it's going to require action. So we can't do it just because of time expediency. All right, Doug, will you put this on for next week then, please?
Okay, so you're good with the rest of the agenda? If so, I'd entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we approve the agenda for today.
Second?
Who did the second? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll get to that one next week. Okay, next item on our agenda is claims. Casey, come on up. I think this was probably one of the lowest months I can remember. You remember?
It was a lower one last year.
Was there one last year?
Yeah.
It has been a year, hasn't it?
It has.
Any questions or comments?
I don't remember. Give me one second.
Yeah, we need just a minute or two here. There was one thing I wanted to ask you. Read this. I wish I could mark it on this somehow. On the coroner toxicology, can we get it reimbursed for those from the family?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
So are they? How does he determine who gets toxicology and who doesn't?
That'd be a question for the coroner.
The coroner?
Yeah.
Seems to me like that's something that families should pay for, but maybe not.
Well, I think a lot of those, they might be indigent.
So then do they file for indigent?
Or the estate has no fundings.
And then we would lean on the estate?
I don't think that. I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I think if it's an unattended death, I think the coroner has the ability to determine if a toxicology should be conducted. He makes that determination. And then that expenditure comes out of his budget. But I don't know about recouping that money, if it's a possibility to approach the families for that cost or not. That would be, again, that would be a question for coroner Carver.
So do we have enough in that budget, Doug? Because I see that's happening more and more. I don't remember if we had enough to fund all that.
If you give me a second.
I think we're going to reach a point here where we're going to be in the negative. I'm just thinking long-term here.
It comes out of investigations at 0106.
And that was 10,000, 5,000?
We actually budgeted 20,000 this year for fiscal year 2021. He has expended $11,586 this year.
Coroner investigations.
And those are for autopsies, toxicology.
No, cremation. Cremations come somewhere else, right?
That's correct. Cremation comes out of indigent.
Hey, any more questions for Casey?
Mine was only on remaining cash, so it's not really for Casey. It might be more for Doug.
Yes, ma'am.
Title III funds. So that, again, I don't know why I can't retain this information. But when I look at that $750,000 in that line item that we have to spend on education, it just bothers me that we're not able to expend those funds. Those, the only things we can spend those on is the state colleges, correct?
Search and rescue?
So if you're talking Title III, Title III is for search and rescue operations and fire mitigation education that can be done.
9102.
Isn't that where Steph puts in her grant money, too?
That's where we were. It's actually 472,000. There was a change. We had to move some money. We did receive our SRS money. There was an error where we put that SRS. So let me just backtrack. Title III has 472,400 in there right now.
And says 750,000.
That, that report is incorrect. There was 330,000 put into Title III.
From the last payment.
For the last payment that we just received. We just did a journal entry to move that money back to the road department. That should reflect 472,400.
Is, is that money the, the money that's tied to federal lands as well?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's search and rescue. And it's very much stipulated on federal land.
Correct.
I looked up Title III online and it talked totally about education. So it totally threw me for a loop. I was going, I totally don't know what's going on now, so.
And Doug, is that money that if we don't spend, we have to send back?
No.
We get to keep that money?
That's more of a state. Education funding.
So when we receive.
Title III, it totally talks about education.
And the education that can be used, again, is for fire mitigation education. As you were fully aware, when we get that SRS dollars, a portion of it goes to the schools, to McCall Donley School District and Cascade School District. And then a portion of that goes to the Title III funding. And then the remaining goes to our road department. So we did receive our last SRS payment, unless it's reauthorized for fiscal year 2022.
With the 850,000. So how much of that went to the road department?
Let me give you that, I do know.
And have we received the check that we were supposed to be receiving from the state?
No, ma'am, we have not received that yet.
We'll follow up on that.
So, Casey, the board order claims for advertising for FireWise would come out of Title III?
Yes.
Make sure that was corrected, my little brain. Any more questions for Casey? Well, Doug's looking that up.
Mr. Moppen, we received for SRS $894,389.59 for the road department. The total payment was 1.1 million 113,000, I believe. Excuse me, 1,382,921.
Perfect. I move that we approve the claims, board order claims. There were no junior college tuition.
Second, ma'am.
Who did second? In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Doug, give me the title again. So I was questioning on the workforce education fund. And there was questions at the Department of Education on whether those needed to go to the general fund if we didn't expend those monies for the junior colleges. Which title is that again? What fund is that?
That's a tobacco millennium fund.
Have fun to see the name tags for the master gardener.
So you might remember more than.
I was reading the names in there. I was like, oh, that's nice. Nice to see some people I know.
I want to do the master gardener, but you've got to volunteer like 40 hours after you take the classes. 40 hours to myself. Angela's volunteering more time right now.
So the, the junior college tuition is 0017. There currently is 255,491 in that fund remaining cash for junior college tuition.
Thank you.
We all good down there?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Casey. Have a great day. Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item is elected official reports. First one up is Sue Leeper. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm obviously filling in for June today. And basically what we have to report is sadly, Megan Davis, who works in our McCall DMV, gave her two weeks' notice. Her last day will be April 30th. And we are currently accepting applications to be able to replace her. I believe that Pat has gotten at least one in.
Is she full-time or part-time?
She is full-time.
Thank you.
So we continue, obviously, to get closer to certification. We're working on our ag values, billing out our yield in deferred timber tax, updating auditing and assigning our reappraisal areas for the summer and preparing our new appraisers for the month of June training. And Beau is at course one this week.
Can you tell me off the top of your head what egg values you're doing?
Not at this moment. I don't imagine they'll change a lot.
I heard they quadrupled. Taxes are going up all the time.
Nail the farmers, poor old farmers.
I'll actually be starting tomorrow morning, working on those.
Okay, whatever.
Hey, do you guys have any questions?
I have one for Pat. Pat, on the replacement of that DMV, where she took a position with $3 or more an hour, are we appropriately, is our salary range appropriate for that position?
Far, far as I can tell, looking at, comparing to, uh, comparing it to salaries.
There's a lot of jobs.
There are a lot of jobs.
Oh, my gosh.
It's not, it's not necessarily the money. We talk about that. Really don't think it's going to be a budget year. A possible.
That was my opinion, too. We're starting to get. We're just starting to bump, you know, where everyone is raising their minimum salary valuation, so.
Does that include seasonals?
Yeah, seasonals.
Yeah, I know. We're getting ahead.
Yeah, but on seasonals, I, the goal with them is just to incorporate them into our ranges. So again, we'll be looking at them on the deputy. Like the marine deputies will be incorporated.
All right. Any more questions for Sue? Thank you. Have a great day. Mr. Miller.
Morning, Doug. Morning, commissioners. I just give you a brief update of what we're working on in the clerk's office. We began sending out the absentee ballots for the upcoming election. You can continue to request absentee ballots. And we will be getting those out as soon as we process the applications. We'll begin working with department heads and elected officials on the upcoming fiscal year 2022 budget. We have scheduled several meetings with the majority of the department heads and elected officials. So once we have our first individual conversations with them, then we'll begin setting those on the commissioners' agenda for the formal budget workshops. So I anticipate our first one budget workshop will be probably the third week in May is when we'll begin having those budget workshops with the commissioners. Courts, Judge Dingeldine does have his mentor judge here today, just kind of overseeing, not overseeing, but just watching him while he is conducting court. So we do have court today, of course. And I think that provides you with a brief overview.
Is that Judge Hippler?
It's Judge Keith Walker, who is Judge Dingeldine's mentor.
Okay. Someone's going to ask you.
Pretty much back to full schedule on all of the trials?
Yes. Right now, we are having court for Valley County Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Judge Dingeldine is covering Ada counties on Thursdays and Fridays. So that is going to be an ongoing procedure that he will be conducting our court Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And then Thursdays and Fridays, he is covering for Ada County. We'll see if that is going to be a process that will continue. But that's the expectation right now of the District Four Trial Court Administrator, that he will be covering court in Ada County on Thursdays and Fridays.
Until we get two more judges picked. And there's one in process now.
That's correct.
For Ada County, then, then.
So it, it's possible that he will be covering, still periodically covering, but right now it is in fact Thursdays and Fridays.
Okay, any more questions for Doug?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, I guess you're for prosecutor? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ryan sends his regrets again for not being able to be here with you. He has commitments in the courtroom. With our distribution of tasks, me being civil, he being criminal, that puts him in the courtroom almost every day. And it leaves very little time for him to do anything other than make sure that that court calendar gets, gets handled in a, in an effective and as efficient way as we possibly can. So we are feeling the pinch with just two attorneys with, with the workload that we both have. But we're working on trying to, you know, figure out how this is going to work. We're both new and trying to get our feet underneath us and figure out how, how it's going to work with the busy season ahead of us. So it'll be our, our first summer here together. And we're excited for what's ahead of us. But certainly, a little bit, a little bit nervous about what's, what's ahead in terms of just the, the volume of, of work that's coming towards prosecutor's office. I have been working, really just trying to respond to questions as they come in. And lots of the department heads and elected officials have, have legal questions. Contracts, MOUs seem to be the majority of, of the related questions. But those usually morph into other things related to the programs that they run. So I'm, I'm getting a chance to, to, to work on some things that I intentionally avoided in law school. So I'm, I'm learning a little bit as I go as well. But I've enjoyed it and appreciate the working relationships that I'm building here. So if the board has any questions for, for me or for Brian, I'm happy to stand, stand for questions.
Well, I'm really excited because I talked to Brian last week and he's going to look at the elevator inspection contract, which I've always felt was a really hard gouge for the counties to deal with. Here, and hopefully we can get that bill down, so.
We have a, a couple of agreements with companies that we've had fairly long-term relationships with. And, and I appreciate the opportunity to, because I'm new, I have questions maybe that hadn't come up before. But take a look at those agreements. And, and because we have longstanding relationships with these companies, they've been, they've been fairly cooperative and good to work with. So I appreciate that. And Schindler was one of them, one of the companies that I've been working with on the elevator service contract and, and a few others.
Okay. More questions for Brian?
Thank you for all you're doing.
Yep.
Very welcome.
Echo that.
Yep, thank you. Sheriff? Good morning.
Good morning. From the tallest to the shortest.
Do you need to put, put, change the schedule around a little bit?
Well, everybody just busy doing, getting their jobs done, learning the new system, doing a lot of traffic control. So waterways is, some of the deputies are starting to get hired back on. And Corporal Turner will be going to the Marine Academy to do some teaching. We've had interviews for dispatch. And we have a detention officer in post. So that's basically what's going on in our world.
Any more luck on getting more state inmates?
Not at this time, no.
Darn it. Need to bring those back.
We're, you know, bringing in those that weren't in arrest from the local area, so. Care of that?
Well, sure nice to have that extra income.
It is. So we'll see, like I said before, once, you know, the courts really get opened up and the sentencings are done, we may see that.
Okay. Any more questions for Sheriff? Okay, thank you. Um, is Gabe online? Oh, there he is. I didn't even see him, man. That's bizarre. Good morning.
Snuck in a few minutes ago. Yeah, good morning, commissioners and Clerk Miller. I, I really don't have much to report this morning. But I will report that with our tax deed properties, we're, we're at 30 right now.
30?
And title searches were completed last week. This week, the notice of pending issue of tax deed sale will, will be mailed out, certified, of course, to owners and interested parties. So we're, we're on, on track with our timeline for that. Our, our new deputy treasurer is fitting in well. And Jessica's doing, doing a very good job, so. You have any questions for me?
Nope, I'm glad you're getting it down to 30. That'll be a fun auction.
Yeah, yeah, well, hopefully we'll be down to zero or maybe one or two by August. We'll see.
We'll see. Hey, any more questions for Gabe?
Could you identify with Doug, who in your department is going to do the capital improvements? Information as far as input into the finite software?
I have not talked with Douglas about that yet, but, but I will.
Okay.
We've got capacity for that, so. We'll coordinate and make sure between the two offices we get it done.
Okay. I don't know if we need to do any training. If we do, we can get the gentleman back on or one of us can spend some time with him, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on into our department heads. And I think Annette sent hers in, didn't she? I don't know where it is right now.
She's listening online.
She's listening online. So we'll skip on down to Skip. Morning, Skip.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So this week, DeeDee's on vacation. And so me and Sue are covering that. Sue's going to be doing the contacts out in the field, meeting with kids at the school. I'll be answering any things that need a little bit more professional wisdom or control on for her. Hopefully, everything goes smooth, but never know. It's that time of year. As far as our caseload, it's, it's kind of growing. It's, it's going a little bit quicker than it was. Expect to be busier as it goes on. Still having trouble with things like having people serve court mid-time. And the judges really have to be creative with that. It's not that the jail isn't accepting it. They are, but then, you know, with people's schedules and their requirements, work release still isn't happening due to COVID concern. And I talked to Sergeant LaCroix, and he's just not sure. It's, it's a fluid kind of thing that they have to determine on safety. So dealing with that is challenging. And I talked to Judge Dingeldine about maybe some of their options, and we'll see. But home arrest really isn't much of a sanction, I don't think. But sometimes it's all we can do, get things done. Other than that, I'm putting my pack together for post in August. It's coming up, which is robust and takes forever. So hopefully, I'll have that done by the end of the week and get it submitted. I believe the deadline is by the end of next month, asked to be put in for approval. Outside of that, I'm still busy with Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee until July. Then I'm supposed to be off that committee, which is kind of a personal blessing.
You've been on there for three years?
Four years, yeah. So that's the way it started out, was a three-year commitment. And the reason I was even put on it is because I was the president of the IAC Juvenile Justice Administrators. And then they changed it so you could kind of be on there forever. But I just felt like it was more healthy to have new blood, maybe administrator from a bigger county to represent. So decided to step down from that.
Are you bringing the MOU to have signed with the Department of Labor?
I think we got that.
I think it was sent to Doug.
Yeah.
All right.
And that had already been approved. So all that we have to do is print it off and get signatures, so.
Just the new one.
The only change was Fridays weren't available up there.
And I talked to them, to the staff that are doing that. And the building right across the way that has fishing game and SIPA is allowing them to use their place on Friday. So they keep their truck in the parking lot, which I've allowed. I've had to move it around during the winter. They can keep their gear in there. And so it's just a short move and moving the equipment they need to set up for their meetings.
I didn't know they were leaving a rig. Did they leave one here, Doug?
Yes. Uh, no.
No, that's the health district.
Idaho Department of Labor does not.
Yeah, maybe I should have asked for permission, but they just needed a place to park it over, you know, just to keep it. And then they go there and then they go to Kier, Cascade, or Councilor, New Meadows. So as far as I know, everything's going good. Expect everybody to be back in the office full-time, back to normal by June 1 is what I've set. From what I can tell, which there's so much information out there. I've been grateful for what Pat has sent. Anybody that wants a vaccination could have it by that, should. I mean, maybe even now, but that's, that's safe. We'll continue to have protocols in place. At time also, I'll open our services back up to other counties. What I've been doing is if it's not a Valley County case or if it's not a Valley County resident that has a case somewhere else where they don't transfer it to, so we're supervising it. I haven't been doing any kind of service form as far as UA's just to reduce the contact population. But as of June 1, we'll just go back to normal. And then if something happens and we have to revert, then.
Just for your knowledge, Skip, I think right now anybody 16 and older is eligible for a vaccine. It's available. And all you have to do is call and make an appointment.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, was that.
The question I have for you is, as you probably noticed, your Ford Escape is gone. And apparently, you guys don't use it that much, I understand. And when they went to get it, it wouldn't start. Brakes froze up, so we're going to surplus that maybe today. My question to you is, you guys feel like you're going to need another set of wheels?
So when we get back to normal, particularly with court, the answer is yes. Because we attend court in person. And it's way better practice. Right now, they're doing everything online. And I don't know, I have, I've asked Doug and Judge Dingeldine about if the Supreme Court has any plans or like an open date. And I haven't heard anything yet.
So have you, have you guys been driving your own personal rigs and then getting reimbursed your mileage?
Haven't had to yet.
Haven't had to yet. But that's an option?
That is, well, when I talked to Doug before and just let him know that this is a possibility. That is, well, when I talked to Doug before and just let him know that this is a possibility, if there's not a vehicle that's that we could get in from the road department, then they could do reimbursement.
Reimburse the mileage.
But that's the expectation, first take that one, first check with the road department. And then if that's not the option, they still have work they have to do, have to take their own vehicle and they can get reimbursement.
And had you talked to Jeff about it? Did he call and talk with you about that? So he's familiar with what your needs are?
No, I haven't talked to Jeff. I'm just gonna pick that up if it came up. So far, it, like I said, it just, because we're only, it's me and DeeDee really. And she's going to the school still and she's doing a few of these other things that are using the vehicle. Jac and Molly are doing it when they do home visits. The home visits, I told them I'm still not doing searches right now, going into the house. It's mostly go to the house, check on them, have them come out. If they're, if they have any concerns, then have that person come back to the office. No, there's some exceptions with people that there's only one person in the house. And then that's different, but when we have multiple people in the house, I just don't want them going in there yet.
Great, good.
Skip, Jeff has stated the last two winters, they've had to replace the brakes because they weren't used all winter. So is that true? You guys not using it in the winter? Could we bring it down here and house it in the winter so it's not just sitting out?
So that vehicle over last year, it kept, we would charge it up, we'd jump it, and then it would keep dying. And I took the battery in and had it tested and Les Schwab said it was fine. But that's the main reason it wasn't used as much, just because we were afraid if we drove somewhere and let it sit, then we couldn't start it again.
Okay.
Historically, I don't think that's been a problem, just really since last April when everything got closed down.
You do use in the wintertime then is, it's just with special circumstances right now.
Yeah, I mean, court runs year-round and so there's there's quite a bit of use. I think probably we could do a little bit better job taking through the car wash so it sprays the bottom.
Can you take mine too, please?
Yeah, but I've been over there quite a few times and it's, a lot of times it's closed. And that's the only option unless we can get down and spray things with the high-pressure water, so.
Even going through a car wash doesn't get it all.
I just.
It's amazing.
Car wash is broken now, so.
It's broken.
You need a new car wash in the area.
There you go.
To anyone out there.
Saw a little bit of that on Facebook. Sounds pretty expensive.
Well, we'll keep the car thing in mind and kind of see how it goes. See what Jeff's plan is on that, let him know today, because there comes a point when it's too much money in these old cars, it's better off to do something different there, so.
Yep, like I said, right now it's fine and it's just a wait-and-see kind of thing when things get back to normal.
Okay. All right, any more questions for Skip?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa just emailed us her report, so we can appendix that to the minutes. She just, I don't think she went, did she went online?
She said she was waiting, so.
Doesn't work. And plugged underneath.
Network is down.
There we go.
Welcome to Life Guys.
And she said she was gonna call in today? Meet today, okay. Melissa, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, go ahead. It's your turn.
Excellent, thank you. I will be working on putting together a budget this week and I'm reworking the wording on clients review for the civil rights procedure for the office. Dr. Marmot will be coming up this Friday to review that with our office team. And I'm working on plugging into a virtual family unit series that the Southern District of Educators are going to be doing weekly fifteen-minute mini sessions throughout the summer. And that was something that was identified by the Idaho Library Commission as, you know, like adult youth programming. And so that's exciting because it's the first time that all of the Southern District educators have put together any sort of series collectively. And so I will be talking about the importance of recreating responsibly and essentially looking at the amenities that are around you and if there's no trash can, receptacles or other devices to be able to pack your trash out and plan appropriately and accordingly to recreate responsibly. And then also keeping kids engaged along the trail with some activities to tune them into the natural resources around them. So that'll be the session that I'll be planning for that family unit series. I'm working on getting the feed exchange bins out at the local libraries and that's in partnership with the West Central Mountains Food Coalition. And continuing to do the peer learning network. And the topic is focused on housing. And I have had people reach out to me around the state wanting to join that. And so that has been an experiment to see if, you know, if those spaces are useful for professionals, working on some of the similar issues that a lot of communities are facing. And so it seems like there is some traction there.
Melissa, what's your next, Melissa, hold on one second, what's your next meeting on the housing issue? When is it?
The meetings are held every second Wednesday of the month at 11:00 AM Mountain Time.
I think.
And if you need that link sent to you, I can send that your way.
Will you please?
I think that those are, yeah.
I'll try and get on that next one.
Okay, yeah, it should be a good one. People have been tasked to not just, the last session, people collectively kind of brainstormed all the issues. And so this time I had said, you know, let's not come back and like do a repeat of repeating what the issues are. Let's do some research, participate in that webinar series that I shared with people. And then let's try to find solutions that we can, you know, maybe move the needle forward on this issue. So the top, the day should be focused more on solutions.
And I do have that. It's it's on my calendar, so I've got that.
Okay. Working with the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council with two community projects. One is for the early childhood development with ELAC and Darcy moving that initiative forward. And then facilitating kind of the Zoom keeper of the National Park Systems Trail Project for the first session, which will be May 12, I believe, from memory. And then the workforce development course has been switched over to a rolling enrollment. And I hosted and held a virtual auction for the Extension Statewide Conference. And that was for my in-depth leadership responsibilities, which is the president of the Community Development Educators for Idaho. And I'm working on some publications. And I have a professional development opportunity tomorrow for active learning and that's provided by the University of Idaho. And that'll be post my second COVID shot. And so it'll be a nice training, low-key activity, depending on how I'm feeling. And then I'm creating some space for myself Wednesday, because I do need another down day. And then master gardeners, there are some master gardeners that have successfully grown mushrooms in buckets in their house. And so humidity seems to be the big limiting factor for this area. But we're all, you know, enjoying that process of learning. And the AmeriCorps continues to plug into Cascade and Downly after-school programs. There was a four-inch swine weigh-in this past Saturday and working on the fair book and beginning to, you know, get the ball rolling for that big event. And just kind of a highlight is that Valley County STEM programs were featured at a statewide training seminar last Friday by the Idaho STEM Center. And it was the Kinetic Sculpture Project that's taking place in Cascade and Downly that that AmeriCorps are plugged into. And Shawna Arnold was the presenter to that statewide audience and she did wonderful. And so it's nice to be recognized for some local programs. Any questions for me?
Any work on your internet access down there? You still?
Commissioner Moplin, Jeremy's gonna be providing.
An update, okay.
At 1:30.
Okay, never mind. I guess we're gonna hear about it later. Thank you.
Okay. Yep?
Any more questions from Melissa?
None for me, thanks.
All right, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Next per.
You too, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Next person up is HR Pat Duncan.
Good morning.
Barely up, what did you do?
I'll tell you when we're not on record.
Okay.
She was mountain biking and motorcycling this weekend.
None of the above. So a couple of things, I was hoping that Meg could join me today and somebody taller than me was there. But she must be working with a customer. So one of the things that I think I've mentioned to probably most of the three of you is that the concern for having somebody in place when I retire. And Meg Crum came to me and she said, I really would like to get into HR. And she has some good management experience behind her, which is a good step. So she is the one that we will be working with from a succession standpoint.
Where's Meg currently working?
She's in the DMV downstairs. Yeah, yeah. So I was hoping to introduce you to her, but that's not gonna work out, so. But I'm excited about it. I think she will be a really good person to take my place, so.
So do you perceive that as kind of a small step over a period of time and bring her into the fold?
Yeah, we, for this year, it'll probably be pretty low-key. But about January, we'll really start, of next year, we'll really start ramping up and making sure she's getting training. And and there'll be times when I'll send something to her and ask her a question or just let her know, you know, here's something for you to learn. She is, has a HR book that she's been reading, you know, Introduction to HR kind of thing, and has been loving it. So she's just really excited about it. And and that management experience is invaluable for an HR person. I mean, there's always the other things that go with it, but they've had to deal with people and she's had to deal with them in a retail standpoint. So that is something that, you know, is really invaluable, so.
So is there like any classes for workman's comp or, you know, salary survey, any education that she could get?
Yes, lots of them along the line. In January, we're doing, January of this coming year, the state, SHRM Council is actually doing a conference and I'd love for her to be able to go to that if we can make it work, so.
Pat, my question for you is this. Mentoring is great, but when you leave, what if we open the opportunity to outside the county? And how do we handle that?
And you can do that. I think it's just a matter of setting the expectations with her, you know, that we're working with you. We really hope that you can move into this role, but, you know, it's always prudent to open it up to the outside as well. So it'll just be a matter of communicating and I'll visit with her about that as well. Just to make sure that we have the right person.
Just want to make sure that we do set that expectation that, you know, this isn't a given, that you're gonna move into a position that.
Actually, I was just thinking about that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's a great training opportunity for her, whether it's with us or someone else, so.
Absolutely.
Good program to be moving forward with.
Yes.
I agree. Mentoring is always a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, I really was hoping that we could get her through the SHRM Department of Labor Apprentice Program. It's a partnership between SHRM and the Department of Labor, but they have to be working in the industry full-time. So that's not gonna work. We'll just have to do our own thing.
Don't have any mentorship stuff like that, though. Kind of a strange.
Yeah, they want, they're trying to get people, it's a, it's a training opportunity for people that are wanting to shift careers, but they need them in the job to learn it and to be able to do the apprenticeship part of it. Kind of like you'd have an electrician working in the electrician field. It's very similar to something like that, yeah. So performance evaluation management, first off, I'm only missing two people of our, from our directors. They were both, were they both directors? Anyway, directors to be able to come and do the performance management training. So I do hold the forms hostage. They don't get the electronic form until they go through the training. But what, the other thing I wanted to talk to you all about is having you also do the performance evalu, the annual evaluation with the directors, because you're already doing the coaching. So it'll be really easy to just sit down and do the evaluation. So I'm hoping that the three of you will be amicable to that and then I can work with you on that, so.
Maybe we used to do it before we had HR, was we did all the kind of evaluations for all the department heads and it was not easy.
No, especially, yeah, especially if you, and this this form is really easy, but especially if you haven't done the coaching, so. What I'll do is I'll send you the form and then the coaching and then you each can fill it out and then I'll summarize it. So I think, I'm going through my list. I think that's primarily what I had to offer. Still trying to get applicants, applicant tracking system's working great. There she is, come on up.
Morning, Megan.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
So this is Meg Crum and she's my mentee for the HR position, so we're excited to have her.
We're excited to have you learn, because it's how people get promoted in this place.
Yeah.
And you got a good teacher there.
Yes, I'm very excited.
And she's gonna kind of keep us in the loop of what you need for classes and all that training and all the stuff you're gonna have to learn, but it'll take time, but hopefully we can get you there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited, yeah.
Great.
Oh, thank you, I just wanted to. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, thanks.
And then the other project that I'm continuing to work on is salaries. I do meet with Doug and Gabby this week. And their question is, what are we looking at? And honestly, based on other agencies, we're where we should be. But based on the salaries, if you look around the valley, we probably are not. So I I'm not exactly sure where we're gonna go with that. I'm still trying to figure it out myself. But I, like I mentioned earlier, I do want to make sure that we don't have anybody below fifteen. There is one position that is a little bit suspect. I've already talked to the elected official about the position and they're gonna change a position. So it's not, the way the position is written now is not what they need. So that will rise, make it rise up to over fifteen and that's really all I'm asking, so. The weed department is gonna be more difficult, just because if you look at those type of positions overall at different agencies, again, we're a little higher than some of them. But I think we just need to really look at what's right and what's, you know, what we need to do.
Do we need four in the, in the weed department or is it three?
You know, I don't know. It's changed throughout the year and he's had such a hard time finding people. We do have two applicants in in the hopper right now. Not sure where he is with them. One of them, he said he's been trying to reach out to, the other one is fairly new and I think he's a great applicant. So I'm sure as soon as Steve can get ahold of him, that he'll probably move in. He's already been doing the weed and pest control, so he understands it. Yeah, he has experience and stuff, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
And then are we still down three in dispatch?
Two or three.
And you, Patty said that there are some people in that loop, so we got people coming.
On that one, that's another hard one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really difficult department to keep full.
We have, one of the things with the new applicant tracking system is it'll tell me how many people have looked at the ad. And it's not, people are interested in the ad, but I think it's the place. And then as they start looking at what the job really entails, you know, it filters them out. So the good thing about all of this is, is that I'm not getting the applicants that are just trying to apply for no reason. So the applicants that we've been getting have been, for the most part, the qualified ones, which is good, it's helpful, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of competition for labor right now up here, so.
Oh, it's all over. It's not just Valley County. We're just a reflection of, you know, Ada and Canyon County, but it's all over. It's all over the state, so it's not just us. So I guess if there's any consolation, that's it. They just talked about on the news. They just talked about on the news how unemployment and the labor market's pretty close to what it was before COVID. Things are bouncing back.
Okay, any more questions for Pat?
Alright.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next victim up is Cindy. Morning Cindy.
Morning. So, we continue to be busy, have lots of conversations with people wanting to do subdivision plots and developments and lots of permits coming through. Most exciting thing, I've already shared with each of you, and that's the finding of the base flat elevations throughout most of the reaches in the county. I mean, it's made for good here.
Cindy, I have a question for you and for Pat both. I got noticed last week that it doesn't look like our vacation on the alleyway is gonna be approved. A lot of folks are against it out here. Hearing is tonight at six, I'll go and try and explain it in more detail to the city, but right now there's a lot of opposition to it. Just so you both know that. Okay?
Right, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself from that conversation at city council completely. From a county perspective, if an application like that came through, where utility companies, the building official, the fire department, and everybody was opposed, we most likely would not.
Yeah.
If that's, I think, the perception.
I don't think they understand what we are really asking for, and I think if I can clarify that we just wanna be able to limit the access to this parking lot, and make it a safer parking lot, maybe they'll grant it to us, I don't know. The other thing you guys should know is that the lot south of here, Steve Bates Car Lot, has been sold. To a private individual, and he's gonna set up a meat shop.
A meat shop?
He's got a wonderful meat shop in Meridian.
Oh, awesome.
He used to be my neighbor.
Interesting.
In a-
But he didn't sell all of it, he kept the sign shop or the title company in the big shed behind, he still kept one lot through there, so.
Yeah, so they'll need to keep that access there.
Yep.
The thing with the vacation is you're making decisions, you know, from here forever. So, I mean.
Well, we'll just see how it goes, just try and explain it to them, and if not, we'll have to figure out another way to secure something for the district judge. Do something different there. Okay, any questions for Cindy? Alright.
We talk, right, I mean, I talk to each of you regularly.
Sometimes you're regular, too, but that's okay.
Okay, yeah, sometimes early in the morning, or, you know.
Correct, and the people, the people that send out emails at midnight. Okay, the next one up is Larry, good morning.
Good morning. Busy weeks, huh?
Oh my, never ends.
No, well, that's a good thing, though.
I guess.
Almost done with spring maintenance for most of our equipment, we've got one groomer that needs two new belts. I'm gonna try to do that with volunteers this summer, rather than having the guys stay on any longer, because we're running into that eight-month deadline. We're also working on pulling all of our winter signs, and starting to put up our summer signs, and organizing the trash pickup days, because our parking lots look pretty bad, so we gotta get all the groups out cleaning up trash. We're, as you guys know, we're working with a lot of fund grants, Mary's gonna talk to you about that. I've started some work on a RAC grant, and started making a list for IDPR grants, which, of course, I've gotta find all the matching for that, so that's quite a process to get that done, I've got goals to have a grant at all four of our budget areas this year. I'm also, I'm gonna head, Fri- Friday, I've gotta leave to go to Boise for a doctor's appointment, after that, I'm heading straight up to Orophino for the ISSA Spring Board Meeting. And then Monday, I won't be here, because I've got another doctor's appointment in Boise, but after that, that should start calming down pretty good. I'm working on our budgets, of course, I'll have our, the 32, the recreation side, I've done pretty good. I think IDPR will have everything to me on Monday for our final numbers, won't that be something new? We have never had that before.
That'll be at first.
Oh my gosh, it just takes a lot of pressure off. H229 AAS is in the middle of the third reading. I don't expect it to happen today, because there's, if you, if you read some of the discussion that's gonna go on today, is some of it's pretty controversial in the House, has a tendency not to want any increases in anything, so that'll be quite a few debates on that, hopefully we'll get it done tomorrow.
Is that today, or tomorrow's when they vote on it, you think?
I hope so, I thought, oh, excuse me, I thought two weeks ago, then I thought last week, and then we decided it would happen today. And then I started going, we're like in the middle of the pack right now on where our legislation is, and I started reading, one of them is, is some debate on the Wolf issue, and two of them are on funding for schools, and I know that's all been pretty controversial this year, which I don't know why or anything, but it just is. I'm hoping we get that done. I'd like to go to that spring board meeting and announce it, to be honest with you. Because the one thing that, I mean, it helps us quite a bit, we're one of the larger programs. The programs we're really concerned about right now, some of our smaller program, Wellington, for example, is very, we, this will help our smaller programs a lot. And I talked to Terry the other day, and he seems to, he has a lot more confidence that it's gonna pass.
Good, that's good to hear.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, that's what I got, guys, anything for me?
I was asking Ann about the impact proposal that she's working on, she said she still needed a capital improvement plan from you. Have you been working with Ann?
So, I, I sent her everything we have at this point, and I'm kinda waiting to see what happens with our IDL lease. I mean, everything is kinda on hold, I can make a, by guessing, by golly, you know, it's, uh, and of course, that discussion this afternoon's gonna have a lot to do with what, what our plans are, too. Yeah, and, and the only, I also haven't given her the equipment, because we've got, you know, three sets of equipment, we got equipment that's owned by the county, we got equipment that's owned by the state, and equipment that's owned by the clubs, so I have to separate that all out. But I've given them all the, I did not appraise anything, I gave them square footage and sent them pictures of all the buildings.
Well, I would assume probably at least do the county equipment, she's probably gonna need the county equipment that we own, because that's gonna be playing into the, to the long-term plan, so I would maybe emphasize that with her a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, and, and, you know, the only real equipment that we got that, e- even though the McCall Club put in the match for the RAC granted by the front-end loader, we're still gonna come to a point, we're gonna need another front-end loader, and we can't get equipment through RAC anymore. Yeah, no, I've got, I've got a list of equipment that I think we're gonna need down, we're gonna need lawn mowers, we're gonna need small tractors. You know, there's a lot of little things that we're gonna need. I just wanna see what happened to the discussion today, and, and the discussion that we have on, on the lease for IDL grant. Does that work out?
Do it.
Cool meetings, thanks, guys.
Yep, we're kind of in flux right now on a lot of this.
Yeah, if I can just find someplace to get a haircut around here, holy moly.
There's a new person-
I was gonna offer.
Started.
I, I'll take it up.
I've got some sisters up here.
I pulled out my things, I was gonna try it myself, and then, no, this isn't gonna work good. No, I've been leaving messages with the gal down here.
No, but there's somebody else that just opened up a barber shop, I think it's down by the Valley Club.
There's one in Donley that just opened up, in the hotel.
I haven't seen either of those, oh my, it'd sure be nice.
Yeah.
Have a great day.
Yep, okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is not till 10:30. So, I guess we'll take a break, and we'll see everybody back here about 10:30.
Do we have any executives that we can take? Do indigent? Might just leave a hole there, though.
Well, that'll give us more time on mass discussion.
What's it, 4:15?
Isn't that a coaching? I don't know, I didn't-
No, it's 15 minutes. We might be able to take that one.
You know what that last exec is?
That was a matter requested from Pat.
That might be a long one.
Might be a long one.
We'll take a break.
Take a break.
Just gonna look at, or show you the Title III stuff, that's education-based stuff, it's all, it's all like yell, A stuff, or yes. English second language.
So, what is that?
It comes from the feds, goes to the states, so that's like a separate, so this is worth dollars, Title III stuff.
So, it's still under Title III, it's just a separate section of it?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know what the funding separation is, I mean, I know like our Title III, or monies are separated for a percentage goes to education, percentage goes to other stuff. But, yeah, this is like really specific to, like, helping smaller school districts, and then there's a provision for colleges and-
For the junior college tuition.
So, when I was at the workforce development meeting, I was explaining to Wendy, you know, those funds, and I said, "What else can we use those funds for?" And then junior college tuition. And she said, "State Department of Education thinks you're putting those right in your general fund." "No, no," so we got $250,000, like, you know, we need more junior college tuitions, but it's so limited.
No, as you say, that's, that's like a marketing program to me, is I think there's a lot of kids that don't understand that they could do that.
Yeah. I had, we worked on that, we have put out a couple Facebook posts.
I remember seeing one, or, yeah.
And I actually did tell the superintendents that when we were working on the BSU initiative. If we could use that for maybe CTE training or something like that, and broaden that scope, that's what I'm trying to accomplish.
I gotta think that that would be feasible in there, I mean.
Because if it's only to the five- Junior colleges, it's just so restrictive, you know, we're never gonna use up that kind of money. And Doug said last year, we got like $30,000, so, and all it's doing is building right now.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I was going, God, why can I not get this Title III in my brain, because-
But like we bought the drones, all that stuff, for sure to rescue that with that money.
Yeah.
We never seem to spend it.
Well, we're getting 30, and we're only expending, well, no, that's junior college. Junior college, I'm trying to separate, so, yeah, because when I got on, if you just Google Title III, either in the state or the feds, all about ESL, English as a Second Language, and, and promoting kids in schools, and that kind of thing.
Really?
Yeah.
That's part, yeah, as I say, that's like part of it, I don't know, I don't know for sure if that's the same program or not. That's what I was trying to Google and find out, what we're talking about, I'm not sure if that comes out of the same chunk of money or not.
And one reason that I was looking at it, too, is because if the legislature doesn't fund the Early Learning Initiative, we need money every single year for that Early Learning Initiative.
Isn't there like a 319A and B, or something like that? Two different accounts for 319 money.
Just I understood all of that a little bit more.
When you figured it out, would that-
I used to, more, and I, I forgot.
It's just so complex, that, you know, it's crazy, but. I also looked into, and I'm, I'm trying to figure this one out in my brain. And I've got, I'm asking Brian the question, so. We are trying to hire a housing professional, for the West Central Mountains. So, basically, an executive director for the housing trust, something where somebody is solely focused on local housing. So, I said, "Would the county give 15?" And, because we do foundations doing 15, Stibnite Foundation, I think, would give 15. I mean, everybody's hopefully gonna do 15 up to 60,000, and then hire somebody. But I was on a call with Bishop and Paul, and one of the guys said, "Remember, you can't give any county funds to a non- You've been funding-"
Yeah, that's not true.
There's Valley Chain's it, I mean, we got a bunch.
What's the house up there?
So, Brian-
I don't know, where can we give money to?
Shepherd or the-
Shepherd's Home.
Yeah. So, we need a executive to find out, because we've been funding. I can see where that's a grant. Matching a grant to a non-
Nonprofit. Never heard of that. That at all. We've been doing that forever.
Forever.
Hey Brian, can we pick your brain before we get back in session again? I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Well, Barnes? Your posts good. They don't last very long up here. The post, you put in the ground?
The conversation-
We used to use Pena and Diesel, but you can't buy Pena in Idaho, you can buy it in Oregon, but not in Idaho. Pena will make them last 30 years. If you just use a green treated, it won't last five years, and it's already rotted. Concrete'll make them rot faster. You're better off to build a concrete footing, put the post on top of it, above the wet ground, and it'll last forever. Anyway, sorry. It'll last forever. But we're still alive?
We need, maybe this needs to be an executive session, or can this be in an executive session, discussing funding for nonprofits? Because we have in our budget, we fund a lot of nonprofits. But what the state constitution, what you looked up on the state constitution, we need further clarity on that, so. Because we do the transit, we do-
Big pause, Shepherd's Home, but I thought they were 501(c)(3) type nonprofits. If I remember right, there was a difference, if you didn't have 501(c)(3), we couldn't do it.
Oh, we need further clarity on-
So, what, what I would like to do is to do some more research on that, and next week, I'll put together a memo in order to what I- On that, and then look at the executive session question as well, maybe that's the appropriate way to do it, or if it just is an item.
Seems like it could just be a regular agenda item to me, but-
Yeah, whichever.
I'm kinda leaning towards that, but I wanted, I wanted to look to see if there's any, any reason or-
Like the Economic Development Council, we're matching a grant that's a state funding structure. So, I can't, you know, I, I would think we wouldn't have any issues there, but.
The, so very, very first, I was aware of the issue, was when there were some funding questions about related to the COVID relief monies. So, there's several county prosecutors on this, on this call that I put on to get, to deal with that, and that's where that came from. You asked the question, and so, all I really had time to do, related to your question, is just questions, and I can make a couple of comments.
And some of that on the CARES funding, I mean, the direction that's coming down is that doesn't touch our general fund at all, that's a pass-through account, so that, that negates some of those concerns.
You're talking about the CARES funding, or the stimulus check that we haven't got yet?
The CARES funding.
That was all separate, COVID-related only expenses.
Well, in the American Recovery Act, the, the money that's coming is not supposed to be hit our general fund at all.
Right, that was Doug was saying last week, I believe, that that would be a separate one.
That's where that discussion popped up with the county's ability to the nonprofits, and I, I'm trying to search in my memory, trying to remember exactly how that became an issue. There was proposals in some counties to offer match.
And I was on a call, and they, they addressed, you know, funding nonprofits, and so I immediately raised red flags with me, just because of in our budget line items, how many we've supported in the past, so. Need clarity on that. Thank you.
I'll get to work on it.
Perfect.
Another thing you guys should know, is part of this Wolf legislation that we just started, I think, last week, is they wanna bump the budget for the Wolf Board for the state of Idaho. In Valley County, we throw, I think it's five grand towards that every year, so that might be one area where we may not have to fund anymore if they get enough from the state. So we gotta keep that in mind. And the bill hasn't passed yet, so we don't know where it's gonna go, but...
And I do, well, there are two separate, there's two separate entities. And control board, which does have the county component. That's the governor's office board that, um, strictly from general funding livestock. Depending on which...
So Doug, with that 5,000, we go to ammo damage with it every year?
That's, yes.
Morning, Scott. Did you get us any more layouts for mobile units by any chance?
Right now, we're playing. That's all the fixtures on all of the smaller offices. Even blew it down, make...
Yeah.
Also kind of, or that's so conservation, but using the back room. Or store.
Then one of you could almost take that larger office and put another wall in it and a door so that you could have a storage to the very end of it.
I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to, at least five cases of paper. Little paper and stuff like that. Got a really good supply of actually, Marox.
Do you use the storage room downstairs at all?
Yeah, we do, but, and we stock that out of the stuff we have. Make sure our towels, paper towels. Get in that, that in the hallway down there. Stock those for...
Well, I haven't notified the, the snow conservation for the move yet because I was waiting to see what Jeremy's gonna do. And the broadband, and as soon as we get broadband, I think we could pull that trigger, but...
I, I put a housing conversation on the agenda also, so we can look at our footprint too, because I, I would like everyone else to look at it and Scott's input on, does it make sense to do, you know, a mobile unit behind the EOC? Or the lot that we have on the other side of the parking lot? I know Jeff uses that for snow storage, but, you know, we need to look at an overall campus footprint and figure out where is the best locations for some of this stuff? And look for a longer-term plan there.
We're gonna take the snow back there so we... Roger.
Um, put that in your capital improvement plan request, that whole thing. If you have a, you know, the best plan, good idea for, you know, where to, where to put it and, like, good stuff.
Also have across there.
Living in snow country. You need a big ol', like, heated cauldron that goes down, just melt it.
Yeah, heated belly dumps in the big cities, they dump that snow in and they're parked over in their storm drain.
Yeah.
They just melt that snow down the drain every time.
I've seen that.
That's gotta be expensive.
It goes right to the river along with all of the impurities that just came out of it.
Maybe we could turn the snow into a trash and make Lake Shore take it.
Oh, that's on, that's on record, Scott.
We are still live.
We actually, I was just accompanying it, you know, the ball and just up at the ball when you did talk. We thought about offering.
No.
There's a pile of snow. Problem is, most, I mean, those people have, they don't have a way to drag like it or around. But, well, it's that kind of stuff all we, all that.
Another way to make jingle. Mark, what are you up to?
Well, I come in to see, see, and she's busy, but I'd like to come in and say hi to you guys.
Good to see you.
Where's your mask at?
No, we're all safe up here. We've already had it, we're all...
Right, you've had, so have I had it.
We've all been infected.
I've had it.
We've all been vaccinated, plus we're maintaining our six-foot distance. When we leave this area, we put our masks on for now. Thank you for your service. That's a tough one.
We've got another 13 minutes before we can move on to our next agenda item, so... I wouldn't put anything in concrete because it'll rot really fast, because the concrete acts as a water basin. So if it gets wet, it just sits in there, it doesn't get a chance to dry out. What, what mostly guys do is pour a pad of concrete and then they'll come up with some rebar, not rebar, but some metal plates and then set the pole down and bolt it. And it sits on top of that concrete. If you put it in concrete, it won't last very long, but it doesn't move. You know, once, it just rots, it just settles down into that as it rots. I would recommend you get it up on, any wood out of the dirt. I have a hay barn we built in 82 and the posts are all rotting and the whole barn is just sinking. Um, there's all kinds of ways to do it. Just long-term, I know it lasts.
They were actually really excited about that.
The south of that, the springs has another, at least half acre, that is on that side of the road. So I'm curious about what they're gonna do with theirs.
Any controversy?
Same side of the road or the other side?
Yeah, the same side of the road.
No, we're, we're pretty smooth. Yeah, we're pretty smooth today. Lots of little things.
Actually, Doug, I'm gonna have you put three things on, so I'll give you a explanation of the three.
No hot topics, no excitement right now. He's leaving us, just like that. It was great. Yeah, they were very excited to hear update on it and they're still looking at what they can do to kind of move forward up there and... I think maybe, you know, they're still thinking around other ideas. But, um, I think more than anything else, they just wanted to kind of get an update on where we were and after looking at the numbers and I went back all the way through the report that you guys sent me and we're not that, we're not that far below. I mean, we're very close to where we've been.
Does that include the solid waste too, Dave?
No, it was just for the recycling centers, the veils that we've been getting out of the recycling center since, what was that, back to March? No, it was not quite March, it was April or May last year. July and August are sure impressive though. Big months for recycling.
Big month for trash too.
Yeah.
What are we now, Scott? Do you know we up to 13,000 ton? 15,000? Remember when Tamarack was 32,000 ton a year? That's a lot of trash.
There was a really interesting, uh, I think it was on KTVB, might have been on NPR or somewhere else, but they were talking about the Boise landfill and how fast they're really filling it up right now, and they were talking about one of the biggest things that they're having trouble with is the mixed load construction waste. Said if they could figure out a way to deal with that, they would probably keep that thing open for like 15 more years.
Once a year usually. Well, it's expensive. It's around, what was it last year, 37,000? 40,000 a year for the county to put that on. Yeah, there's companies that come in and take it, sort it. I don't know what they do with it, but...
We're doing it every other year.
It's just got too busy. Yeah, I heard you, yes, or no, Saturday, that we're averaging 9,000 cars a day coming up here. And that's just a normal day kind of stuff. I saw a schematic of a new rainbow bridge. And it's north of the old rainbow bridge, but it's a straighter shot. And then you can dive off and go down into the rainbow bridge, park there and walk out on it. Thought, oh, we can call that suicide bridge, because you can't fish off of it, it's way too high above the river, but they're talking about leaving that bridge for, sit there and take pictures, I guess, but... That'll be the next thing coming down the pike is the new rainbow bridge. Who knows? ITD, they schedule all that stuff way out. Big span, but they're gonna do a red steel rainbow like the other one, but it's all gonna be a steel frame instead of concrete. From the proposals. Well, no, the guardrail will still be concrete, but I mean the, the structure underneath. And then they still have to build a, a structure over the railroad track. So the train can get under if the train ever comes back and it's like, I think they need to abandon that track, make them clean it up and do something else with it, but...
Out of that, are the janitors just not catching it?
We're still doing five days a week too, aren't we? I'll be able to start thinking about talking about that, maybe after the season of the mud's over. Going back to the three-day-a-week, save us some money there. For the whole year? We can't change that. Did you guys get the floors done, the sheriff's detective's room and all that yet? That's okay, we'll wait till then and then we'll, that'll be a nice improvement, but we got four more minutes.
I want to ask you to, I don't know if this needs to be on an agenda item also, but with this housing professional that we're trying to raise funding for, um, Perpetua has in their CUP requirements that they have to participate in housing solutions. So I'm wondering if, you know, if we can look at maybe a funding mechanism that people could use, you know, with these, if you are needing to participate in housing is one of your CUP requirements, if they can help fund something like that.
The last I remember on, Dave, you would remember, is with Midas, is they're just gonna pay higher salaries so they can afford to buy houses and I'm going, that's not affordable housing at all.
We put a CUP requirement in there that they actually participate in employee housing.
Have to build it.
Well, we didn't put that, they have to participate.
And yeah, the conversation...
So it could be a funding mechanism, you know, that is triggered, and I don't know what that would look like, how much that would need to be per year, you know, to satisfy that, so. We need to start thinking through those types of things because as, you know, we get Tamarack coming on board and we get other people that, that want to build and impact where we need local housing, you know, what does that look like?
In the old days, it used to be a 20% of your employees, you had to provide housing for 30%, whatever that magic number was, and that's kind of what our service does and what Tamarack was doing. Providing at least 30% of their employee housing.
I need to go back and look...
I think we need to even go higher.
Yeah, we, we need to go back and look at all of that, come up with a long-term strategy for all of that, but for now, I'm gonna ask for some grant money from the Stibnite Foundation and also from Perpetua for this position. But we need to, we need to start having conversations about what that looks like in an ordinance or something like that, you know? We started addressing this because, yeah, it's, it's critical need now.
Hey, we're gonna go on down to our agenda a few minutes early, but we need, we have a lot to do today. Our next item is buildings and grounds. Our solid waste supervisor, Scott. First item up, we have an action item, schedule free and reduce dump dates for solid waste. Have you got those?
Yeah, what, what we've got is, um, the free dump days for the spring, we're looking at June 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And then in the fall, we're looking at September 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
And then... Actually, I have a bigger calendar, I can't see the numbers over there.
Gonna do the, um, the burn permit season, I talked with, um, Stephanie Nelson, is, um, May 10th to October 20th. So that's when they can bring the woody debris up there and then have reduced charge for commercial. Um, is what we're, we're looking at. So that'll run from the, may 5th of, or the 10th of May to the 20th of October.
So it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday for each free dump days?
Well, it will be for the spring, it's, um, yeah, it was actually, um, like June is, is four days. It'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
June 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th?
Yep.
I missed the second part. That sound good to everybody?
Sounds great to me.
About entertain a motion to approve those dates?
I'll make a motion that we approve the dates for the free and reduced dump dates in both June and September.
I'll second that.
Who did second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I did, um, I talked with Wendy Cook, she's a Clean Earth, they do the hazardous household waste collection for us. Um, and we've set a date for August 21st, uh, on the Saturday. On the Saturday to do the, uh, household hazardous waste collection again.
And you guys, you do that at Lake Fork, is that correct?
They set up out there at Lake Fork, because it's for the, the room and everything.
Remember last year, what, what like the wait times were? I just remember there were, at one point I drove by, I wasn't dropping anything off, but I drove by and there were a lot of people out there. I'm just wondering if there was any way that we could spread that out over two days? That would be possible when there, with those guys or?
I'd have to ask them about that. Um, I don't know what, you know, I, last year I wasn't involved in it, so I don't know what the wait times were and stuff, but, uh, um.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I saw pictures of twenty cars.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
What date says scheduled again, Scott? I'm sorry.
Eight twenty-one.
That was, uh, August twenty-first.
That might be something to ask him about. I mean, I think.
Or either that or they give.
Question about doing another day even or?
Another day or another table, another person there to do two lines or three lines?
Yeah, if they could, yeah, increase their, uh, personnel and stuff.
It was just two guys, wasn't it last time?
And stuff, so. But yeah, that's what we.
Lot of, lot of demand on that, which is a good thing.
With that?
There's a lot of demand for that, which is a good thing.
Like I say, they're already asking right now about doing it and, um, uh, but.
I guess, Scott, my feeling is if you could just get them to figure out a way to speed up so they can take more customers.
Yeah, I mean, if they have more personnel there and they have to bring more carrying capacity with them to take it back with them, but, uh, yeah, I can talk to her about that. And wait times. And then, um, talking with Stephanie Nelson also, um, they're going to put out the, um, the bins with the fire department on May first, because they run about ten days. And then they have from May twenty-eighth, May twenty-ninth, they have bring it, don't burn it going on. So that's the, the date she gave me for the, the bins that they work with the local fire departments with.
But those are out there all summer.
Meckel does that.
Thought those bins were out there all summer, wouldn't it?
No, it's like, I, the one I see the most is the one there in, in McCall and it sits there in the corner right there, but it's, I don't remember being there all summer long. Just I haven't, you know, the time I've been here.
Scott or Gabe, do you guys remember? I thought that was out there all summer.
It's out there for. It's. Why some time, I don't know if it's all summer, but.
Yeah, because once they can haul it. Yeah, because once, you know, starting in, you know, May tenth, they can haul it, you know, up to the. And so I think, I don't think they run it all summer long, but is at that point then they can dump it up there to. I think they, they, they run those bins with Meckel, takes those.
So then you'll get this in the Star News or somebody will get this on the web and all that stuff?
Yeah, get that out there and let people know.
Get it to McKenzie so she can.
Yeah, mm-hmm. I kind of wonder about stumps seem to be a big problem getting them burned. Before I kind of found out is about, I guess, I don't know if we need to separate them or something, but they, instead of putting them on the bottom of the pile to burn, they want, what I've talked with Jeff and then I talked to the young guy in Garden Valley that does a lot clear and want to get them stumps on the very top of the fire. So that fire comes up and burns them because by the time the fire gets to them when they're on the bottom, it's got enough ash and stuff packed around them. They don't get sufficient air to make them burn. I don't know if we want to try and separate those out or something. As they say, a big excavator is the best way to handle stumps, I guess.
Well, and if you can get all the dirt off of them, that helps a great deal.
One thing I said, if you can get a hold of them and shake them, you know, or bang them around, uh, to get the dirt out of them, but, um, seem to be getting a lot of stumps already and stuff.
Pretty amazing pile of ash that's left up there on that top this year. Those piles were enormous. They got burned.
So, I don't know.
And Scott did a good job of getting that all cleaned up, leveled out. We talked about that. When was that? March, February?
Those are doing a great job leveling up. Uh, this is the first I've heard about this. They are looking, I'm hoping that we're going to get a, uh, the excavator. Higher instead of, those are all. They're one of the sites. Hopefully we'll get it.
You know, does it have a thumb on it, Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, great. You need a thumb.
It's a big one. It's like the, about the size of the one, uh, Brookshank up there a few years ago. Got on top of the file. Part of the problem with getting this stuff up. They did their, so. We, we have this, the, the construction guys, they use those in there. The dust, they rush in there. They'll run. Parts of day in there. Difficult to pick all that up. That's where you can do it, that we have found. Once we get it, while it's burning, then we pick it up. Howl on their own. They still don't want to burn.
Nope. Hey, anything else?
As far as solid waste and, uh, now, um, we're going to start on the floors you're talking about. We're going to do locker rooms and the bathrooms and the foyer of the sheriff's department. We're going to do these two back here and the first floor of women's and, uh, and start that on the eleventh. They're going to try and do it all in one day, but not quite sure if they can. It's a low VOC compound, but there will be odors. So people, I'm going to get an email out and let them know because we're going to have to take those bathrooms and stuff down a couple of days ahead of time because we're going to do the demo. We're going to pull, to save us money, we're going to pull the vinyl up, take the stalls out, the toilets and store all them. And then they're going to come in and do whatever grinding or they have to do to get the glue off and then they're going to coat them. So there will be some smell involved, but, um.
If they're down for two days, is there someplace employees can go?
Well, I mean, we got, I mean, they're just going to have, you know, use the second floor here. Over here, they're, they're going to have to go over and use the ones in the jail hallway.
What about EOC?
What's that?
EOC?
We're not doing anything in the EOC.
So they could use EOC if they had to?
Oh, yeah, they could go across, yeah.
And make sure you get that word out because we'll hear about that.
So that's the plans on those, uh, as far as the floor coating is going and stuff.
Right.
And then, um, and, um, so that's, um, again, we had this week, we had trouble with the nine-one-one bathroom. Again, that thing seems to be a headache. I don't know if the pipes weren't graded properly at the original installation, but we can have a constant plugging problem with it. And, um, part of it's coming from occasional use. I don't know what's going on. Uh, we haven't had the toilet in the jury room back up this week. So, uh, I don't know what's getting put down it. It, uh, we camered it. The guy came because he's just bought a new camera and, um, it's just, uh, we've had problems with some feminine hygiene products being put down it. Uh, we pulled those out again this week. And then there seems to be like a sludge or something. I don't know if the jury room is not getting used enough and stuff sits in the bottom of the line and it kind of turns into a gel, gelatin type stuff. The auger will go through it and not carry it and the auger will come back through it. And soon as you start using it, it backs it up again. But I think we got it cleaned out again this time and stuff, so.
Is that part of the problem that was downstairs in the, or was it in the lunchroom or something last week that happened to plug up in the?
Oh, they had the drain in the break room. It's just coffee grounds, stuff getting put down it. You know, coffee's got a lot of oil in it. Um, I've had when in, in my service career, drinking fountains. People use them to dump all their coffee in and then pretty soon that little P trap in there gets plugged up.
I did.
So we just, uh, we just chemically cleaned it. It's what we did. I kind of smelled the place up a little bit. But, um, it's just, um, gotta be careful stir sticks and things down, get down in there and everything else, but, um, it's just kind of part of it, you know? People rinsing out their, their stuff they bring for lunch and it's got oil and grease and stuff in and leftover and it just eventually builds up in those. So, so.
Just like at home.
Yeah, and coffee grounds are one of the big ones because they settle out in the bottom of the P trap. So anything, you know, cleaning, rinsing out the basket for the coffee maker and it puts grounds down it and pretty soon that bottom of the P trap's got full of, um, coffee grounds and cleaned it out. So, but I know they, with nine-one-one in the past, they've actually went in, they cut a hole in the sheet rock downstairs on the second floor and crawled in and regraded some of that pipe. It's just like, it really wasn't, uh, graded properly or something. I'm not quite sure. One thing we have is that kitchen sink and the bathroom sink are hooked together, which is an illegal deal. I'm not sure how it got passed through. But, um, they were tied together, which they're not supposed to be. You can.
Mention that in this.
You can vent the sink on the toilet vent, but you can't put the kitchen sink and the, and the, the, uh, bathroom together, but we've camered it and run water in both and they both come together there. Just got to be careful what gets put down it, you know, we're going to have to use it properly. And what we're going to do, I think, is we're going to go up and chemically treat the drains occasionally, just to try and keep any sludge buildup and things in.
Any more word from the school on the street?
No, I haven't heard anything back from them and stuff. I need to, I guess I'm going to have to call in again and, uh, we're going to kind of try and wait. We're, I don't know if we're going to get a rainy season this year or not, or but, um, because the groundwater level is so high, trying to dig, you know, till the ground level goes down without having to do a lot of, having a lot of pumps available. You know, and then with all that water, your hole keeps, you know, caving in, you know, it's like digging in, in with a lot of water and sand and rock. It's just you end up with a hole ten times bigger than you started off with. But I would like them to start getting serious about doing something out there. I'd like to get our parking lot fixed and stuff and, um, also looking at, uh, talking with electricians of, or Tri-State's, a couple of them, maybe get some lights out in this parking lot over here. There may, going to be kind of obstacles to plow around, but, you know, we're going to have to come off the EOC probably for power, but, uh, probably wouldn't hurt to have some lighting over there. And then get it painted and striped and designate areas for the public to park in and for employees to park in and so.
There was a few times this winter that I left in the dark and I was by myself. It was a little spooky over there.
Yeah, it's pretty, you know, pretty dark over there. There's no lights pointing that direction. The ones off the EOC really aren't sufficient to give you adequate light over there. So something like putting three poles across there, you know, um, they, you know, bore some holes, put some sonotubes, mount some lights on it. Then we'd have to cut the, cut the asphalt and, and get power, you know, over there.
You know, Scott, wasn't this city, I think it was this sidewalk from here down to Howdy's they're going to replace this year?
Yeah.
Would they put in any street lights?
I'm not aware of anything about that, um.
Like they did, you know, the rest of the sidewalks, the, the green street lights with the tree bells and all that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's part of that or not. I'll try and find out tonight if I can remember.
Yeah.
On the, on the, uh, vacation hearing tonight. We'll try and throw that in, see if we can flag some out.
Because I met with them, they did talk about they have like grant money or something to do the sidewalk clear down to Howdy's.
Right.
And stuff and, um, I don't know if we, you know, just know if we need sidewalk kind of along this side of the building. We don't use it use it a lot. People aren't parked. People still, their habits, they come back here and park if they can find a spot and then they got to go. Once they go up to the doors and see the signs and they're clear around, but, um, that habit maybe, you know, it's not real good walking along the side of the building, you know, over here.
No, in fact, that can be for water along there a lot of certain times of the year.
Yeah.
End up walking out in the road.
Yeah.
There was talk about adding one there on the north side of the building, so.
I don't know if that's our function or the city's.
Yeah, I don't either.
Cities is the one that was the.
What I remember talking about as well is that we were going to talk to the city about that and the, the broken contract, uh, concrete up front.
If the mayor's listening.
Yeah.
She could email us. We.
Yeah, the trees, trees and sidewalks never work.
Nope.
I don't care what kind of tree you plant. Plant a tree along the sidewalk and pretty soon you're got what we've got going on out there and what they've experienced and stuff, so. It's, um, I think that's about it. Unless you guys have any other questions as far as what's going on out here.
Any more questions for Scott? We'll probably remember them after you leave, but I don't think so.
Okay.
Better get onto a contract that might take a few minutes.
What's that?
So we better get onto the contract. That might take us a few minutes, dude.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is also an action item. This is approval of the solid waste agreement with Lake Shore Disposal and I'm going to turn this one over to Brian Oakey. We've kind of, taking a step back and relooked at that contract and Brian's got some good ideas.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, as you may recall, we had some discussion about this agreement a couple of board meetings ago. And the, the discussion and the desire was to combine the two separate contracts that the county had with Lake Shore Disposal into a single contract. So, I've been working with Scott and Lake Shore, uh, to get that done and then have brought up a couple of other things, uh, uh, to discuss. I think just to, maybe to preface my, my comments, I first of all, want to, want to make sure that the board, as well as Scott, while he's here, is clear that my, my questions about the contract is not, not aimed at or desire, my desire to, um, question the services being provided. I think Lake Shore's made a commitment to the county and, and from every, everybody I've talked to, uh, about the services that are provided. It's a, it's obviously extremely valuable and a requirement of the county to provide, uh, for the health and safety of its citizens, the solid waste and, and the recycle, uh, services that are being provided. And so certainly there's a, an education component for, for me, being, uh, new to this particular agreement, but there's some, been, been some questions that we're going back and forth on and we do need some time, uh, to resolve those things. The length of the contract was the first thing that, uh, the first thing that I questioned. There is, uh, there is a general rule that counties only have contracts or agreements within their, uh, within their current fiscal year, uh, with some limited exceptions. Solid waste disposal, uh, could be one of those exceptions that would allow county to go beyond, uh, the original fiscal year. However, just because the authority is there doesn't necessarily mean that's, that's what is in the best interest of the county. So we, we've got some details to work out there. Um, as you may well be aware, because of your experience with this, uh, with this agreement, there are some annual, uh, some, some annual requirements that are within the, within the contract itself. Primarily pricing structure for customers as well as pricing structure that's being charged to the county needs to be approved annually by the board. So there is going to be, uh, there's going to be frequent check-ins with, uh, with contractor. So, um, potentially, potentially there may be an opportunity for us to revisit and re-sign that contract on an annual basis, depending on, uh, where these negotiations end. Uh, this, the second part was the exclusivity of the agreement. That was a, that was a component of the original contract and, and I want to understand more about that. Uh, I want to understand what the expectations are. The goal, um, the goal from my perspective in, in this negotiation is just to make sure that, that county, as well as myself, as well, where what the expectations are and they're clearly spelled out in the agreement. So we know what, uh, what the county has to do deliver on, to deliver on its, uh, its requirements under the contract as well as what the expectations are as the contractor, uh, will deliver to us as well. In talking to, uh, Scott with facilities, uh, there's, there's a desire to get some data in terms of, uh, what we have, uh, what we collect and haul, uh, down to, uh, from the transfer station down to the landfill as well as, uh, some data on the recyclable materials. So we have a better understanding of what's coming in and what's going out. And based on some sensitivity related to that data, uh, from Lake Shore's perspective, those are some discussions that are ongoing as well. So, so those are the three big issues that, that we've been actively working on. Uh, as, appreciate Scott's, uh, getting, uh, information back to me. He spent, I don't know, a good hour on the phone, uh, last week helping me understand a little bit more about, uh, what they do and, and, and the history of this, of this agreement. So, uh, with your, with your permission, we do need some more time, uh, to, to finish out the negotiations to get the, um, get this fine tuned. So ultimately, so both, both parties involved with this, with this agreement will, will be satisfied with the end product and will have a good agreement that, uh, will work, uh, Will be satisfied with the end product and we'll have a good agreement that uh will work uh to the very best for. The citizens of the, of the county and, and for the county as, as a whole. So any, any questions from the board for me? I know Scott's here, I may have questions for him.
Well, I guess my question is more for Scott. I mean, how you, how you feel about all this? What, what do you wanna do? Do you, is this okay? Is it going in the right direction? Give us your general concern.
Oh, good morning commissioners. Um yeah, thanks for, thanks for the question out. Um. I'd like to just take us back real quick for some history on this. Uh the original contract was signed in two thousand thirteen. At that time, there was two separate contracts. One was for hauling. In other words, the um, the residents of the county had. Had the ability to subscribe to our service. And then the other one was for the transfer station and the recycling portion. Both contracts, for some reason they wanted them separate, but both of them had wording. That kind of overlapped one another. Um so if you recall, uh in, in late two thousand eighteen, uh we'd, or excuse me nineteen. We decided to uh remove the depots and bring everything for recycling to Lake Fork. So that revamped. The contract. And so what we did is we took our contract, we brought it to you guys and said, hey, we can make this work. We're gonna change the scope of the contract. Um but this is what we need. You know, we'll. Halt on C P I's, we'll suspend those for two years and extend the contract out five years. Um last year. It was July thirteenth that uh we all, you guys and myself and Doug. Signed the amendment to the agreement. An oversight. Happened. And that oversight was, nobody realized that we were talking about two separate contracts. Um total accident, you know, we did this all in, in good faith. Um I believe the county. Uh didn't know and it was, everybody was all in this agreement under good faith that we were doing the right thing. When we realized that there was a second contract, it was, it was found by my controller actually. Um said, hey, we didn't get this one signed. And when I looked at it, um it definitely, its scope is definitely more along the lines of. The residential pickup that we have exclusivity in the county to do. Um so we tried to vamp those two together. Or excuse me, I, I tried to amend just the one. And that's uh what Okey spoke to earlier was that a few sessions ago, we decided that, hey. Why have two contracts when we can have one? Let's put them together. I understand uh where Okey's coming from on the, on his concerns. The. Data that uh Gabe and Scott are looking for. Is actually not what's coming out of the transfer station or going into it. It's what we actually pick up from businesses. Throughout the county. Um we did have some concerns about that, but we are going to provide. That information. And the reason for those concerns was it would become a public record of this is how much we pick up at. Grandma's, this is how much we pick up at uh say Albertson's or wherever the location may be in that. Could potentially put us at a crossroads if there was ever. Somebody else came up during a, you know, a session to, to bid on the contract. They would have. I wouldn't call it inside trader information, but they'd know what they were looking at, right? Um but we uh, I've spoke to. To the people above me that make those decisions and we're uh, we're gonna be able to provide what information we have. We don't pick up for, they're looking for the uh solid waste fee and how to. Assess that to individual cust- uh businesses where you might have. A bunch of garbage with one and one trash can with the other, but they're both paying the same fee. So they're looking to, to fix that throughout the county, which. Lake Shore is obviously not involved with, but we do have some data that could, could help with that. So we're gonna go ahead and, and provide that. Um as far, as far as the exclusive agreement, I did provide. Um this document, which is the state statute uh to Okey. Just basically says that refuse is able to. Not be bound by the one-year term that counties and municipalities have. For us, that's very important from the standpoint that it allows us to um. Structure financially into the future with our capital needs and our, and what we need to do to continue to provide. Good service, um whether that be on the residential side of things or at the transfer station. It also really helps because it protects. Citizens by being in an exclusive agreement, meaning that our C P I. Uh we, I bring you guys whatever that C P I is every year um in June or, or uh. When Doug needs it for, for budgeting purposes. Um that, as long as it stays under three percent. That's. We, we let you guys know if it's over three percent, you guys um basically approve it, vote on it and approve it. We haven't seen over three percent um and since I've been here, so in five years I haven't seen it. But that's important for your residents because if you bring, if the door is left open for anybody to haul. Refuse, solid waste, it leaves the door open for other people to come in and do it and not control the rates. And so eventually your residents could, could be paying more than what they, they need to be paying or what they should be paying.
Scott, does that include woody debris? Cause I think that's where we had issue a few years back was. Some of the private guys hauling woody debris and you guys felt like that was your function, but I thought we took care of that some.
So we did take care of that. El, um thank you for bringing that up. That. Woody debris, so C and D, construction and debris. Completely separate from solid waste. So all our contract talks about is the solid weights, waste, which is your, basically feel the onion back. It's your kitchen and bathroom. Is what it is. So yes, um that was prior to my term here uh at Lake Shore. That um scenario that happened and after. Attorneys reading and understanding and educating the, the people that were at Lake Shore at the time. They realized that that was not part of the contract. So our exclusivity is just for solid waste. What we do when we come to, I'm pretty sure we have garbage at everybody's house that's on the panel today. Um that's what, that's all that that is. Um and so it is important for us. We have long-term contracts with the city of Cascade. Donley, McCall, City of Riggins, uh we all have, we, we have contracts with them that are long-term contracts. And they, they see the benefit in that. And I believe that Valley County has seen the benefit in it as well throughout the years. Um I'd also like to remind you that. Both contracts were up in twenty twenty-three. So we have an amendment to one contract that goes out to twenty-eight. The other contract that we did not amend is the one currently that we're looking at combining. That particular contract has a uh default date of twenty-three. Just so that you're aware of.
Well Scott, by combining those two contracts, the, the one concern I have is on the recycling end of things. I mean, Tamarack does have a vibrant recycling program. So exclusivity in the recycling area, that would negate somebody from having their own recycling program.
Correct. So the best part about how. Well, I say the best part, but in my opinion, I think it's a good, good thing for uh the counties of Idaho. Majority of the counties in Idaho put forth the solid waste fee. Um I, we don't call it a tax, but it comes on our, on our bill every year and it's that solid waste fee. And what that does is it gives the individual. The ability to haul their own trash to the transfer station. They don't have to use us. We are a subscription, just like your cable bill or your cell phone bill. So with that being said. Same falls in for the recycling. All that we are contracted to Valley County for in the recycling part. Is to, at the Lake Fork site. Recycling comes in, we manage it, we bail it and we ship it out. That is our contract with the county. We would have no. We would have no legal stand for the Tamarack. Or the uh Ridley's that bail their own cardboard or the Albertson, or not Albertson's.
The meeting has now ended.
Oh, you're done.
Okay. So yeah, that's.
Well, that, that could be an issue Scott, because I know the cities are talking about doing their own and my feeling is they should be able to use our facility. To bring that recycled.
And that's absolutely.
That's permitted.
Absolutely. That's entirely up to you guys. What we're doing is we're just doing the work for the county. So whatever work the county wants us to, to do in that scope at the recycling center. Whether we're bringing recycling in from Grangeville, we don't care, cause our contract is with. The, the county and what we're doing.
So if someone like Tamarack wanted to bring their recycling to us, that would be permitted.
Oh, absolutely be permitted as long as it was done in the way that we are collecting, how we have agreed to collect. The product. And if they brought it just like any other citizen that drives through there, then it's totally fine. I mean, we can't take a big dump truck full of stuff and it's, you know, separate it. That's always been our problem, right? We, we haven't had that ability to do that. But as long as, yeah, anybody can bring it. It, it's. We have multiple businesses coming in there every day.
So the folks that are bailing their own cardboard right now, like Tamarack and some of the stores, are they um contracting, they backhaul that with like their own trucks when they?
So this is, so I, I don't know if I said Tamarack, but if I did, I apologize. They're not bailing their own. The last person that I know of that are bailing their own is D nine and we pick it up every week. Um they bust the bail back open and put it in their cardboard dumpster. And then Ridley's, um if they still are doing it. They actually contacted me to find out who could haul it out of here, cause they couldn't find anybody to haul it out of here. And I said, I can't find anybody. So I can't help you. But um, so yeah, that's, I don't know that Ridley's is.
Well, as I said, I knew Albertson's is bailing their own and they, they don't go through us. That's.
Yeah, so I would say that Albertson's is putting it on their own trucks, just like they do their pallets. You know, they'll bring their pallets in and they have their own Albertson's pallets and they'll, they'll take them back like that.
Uh you said like Tamarack's not bailing right now.
I don't believe.
They've got a nice baler. It's little, but.
I don't know where that's at.
It's in the, as you drive in on the old North Lay Down Yard is what they call that. There's the two.
So the only one that I knew was there was their compactor. I didn't realize that there was a baler in there. So I can't say how they're.
No, I think you're right. I'm sorry. I, I must have misspoke. I think it is just a compactor.
Yeah, cause there's a trash compactor that we haul out of there every whatever week or whatever they ask us to come haul out.
That's not recycling. That's just normal trash.
That's just normal household trash.
Oh, they have, they have their own recycling.
But they do have their own recycling center. What they do with that, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're, what they're. How they get rid of it or where they, where they take it.
Well, it was, it was interesting time. I was telling Okey this morning, I had somebody that called me over the weekend that was interested in like looking at a, a recycling program that they would start where they'd go to like condos and. And businesses that wanted to haul, but didn't want the hassle of hauling it down to Lake Fork. Try to start their own business. And that was one of the conversations that just came up. Is they would then be, I guess, under our agreement right now, we would allow that to occur.
Yeah, because we're. I don't wanna, I don't wanna misspeak um because I'm, I'm not.
You're on public record.
I know I am. I know. I'm on public record. So maybe I could ask an attorney for some advice. Okey tells me to be quiet. Yeah, call a friend. Um I. I don't believe that would be a huge issue. Um and the reason is, is we're not, we would, the only time that would become. Um something is if we have discussed with the city of McCall on several occasions. Doing curbside recycling. Um so I would just, I would caution that um because like I s- because the, the. Solid waste fee allows you as the person to haul it. If you want to hire someone to haul your garbage. Then we are the subscription that you hire to, to come haul your garbage, whether that's, hey, I just wanna call you and come pick it up. Cause we do offer that service or it's, I want you here every week on the day you service this area, which is ninety-eight percent of what we do.
Why would that be different for recycling then?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that, that's why I say that I, I, I think that that. Now, if the company was hauling it, you know, the individual, we're good, but I think if we were looking. At someone actually starting a business, we would have to have a discussion um and just read through that and. Decide, you know, where we're at.
Well, I would think if they brought it to our Lake Fork facility separated and they put it in the bins themselves, I, that's no different than me going up there with my recyclables. Whether they're just picking it up from the condos as a business, but we can't sort it, we can't do all that. They'd have to do all that part of the work. To me, that should be acceptable.
And it very well could be. Um again, if. The way the contract reads is um at this time with the exclusive agreement. Notre de Pure could not come here, I pronounced that wrong and I apologize, but they could not come here and start up their own trash hauling service. So when you flip it over to the recycle side. I don't know. That's. I'm leaning towards that it would probably be okay because we are not in contract to haul recycling. We are in contract to manage it.
And I think that's what's gonna happen with the cities, is they're gonna end up probably with their own bins, their own folks that would bring it to our facility.
That opens up another can of worms though, is then like they're not gonna come and stuff each piece through the little slots that we have in the current bin. So we're back to like, we need a big bin that you can. Dump back into.
I think this is an ongoing conversation not resolved today, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think the recycling part of it, um hopefully McCall will work with us. Um on hauling it from wherever they're at to uh the Lake Fork facility. And if we had to give them each separate bin like what we have set up, that would be a contract between the city of McCall and Lake Shore. So I'm sure that will come about, but the pros for me um are, are basically what I just stated. Um and, you know, we wanna continue uh this. This relationship with the county that we've built and we have a good one and we always have to be prepared as a company to protect ourselves from. Um people coming in, um cause it is, it's like any other business or, or anything like that. So we do prefer the uh. The extended contracts. Um best case scenario for me, um. I'd like to work with Okey and get the exclusivity portion of the contract. Where we're, um he feels comfortable with that. Him, he had some concern that the way that it wasn't written in two thousand thirteen was. Do we have anything that's legally, that we're actually, we have a legal stand. The county would have a legal stand to say, hey. X Y Z garbage company, you can't haul here. And the way he was reading the contract, he wasn't seeing that. And so. I'm sure that the preferred language in the contract in two thousand thirteen is a lot different than it is in twenty twenty-one. Um so what I'd like to do is. Keep the scope of the contract the same as far as exclusivity and longevity, but that we. Exclusivity and longevity, but that we. Worded. With some. Wording that everybody's comfortable with. That's what I would like to see.
Well, it sounds to me like you guys got some more work to do on the contract and. You know, I think. We'll turn it back to you guys, you take whatever you need, the time, and then when you're ready to go. Get it back on the agenda and we'll. We'll get it pinpointed down and get it done, but it sounds to me like we're kind of already committed to two thousand twenty eight on some of it. Cause we have signed that contract.
I think two thousand twenty three.
Well, well, you said two different things, you said, wh- what is the contract that we're committed to through twenty eight right now?
That contract is the recycling and transfer station. So hauling of the material out of there down to Payette. Um, and the recovery and. Bailing of the recyclable material and the hauling of it. More than anything, I don't know if this was really on Oki's um, agenda today, but what I was hoping. To get from you guys is. Cause it will depend on which direction, how how our discussions go. Which direction do you want to see the contract? Do you wanna see the contract go in a longevity? Way, or do you want it to be a a lesser than? You know, go down to that one year. Cause that's gonna, that's gonna determine. How we talk about this, or if. We decide to table it. At this time and just wait until. Twenty three. So.
Um, I would rather not table it, I wanna get it, the, get it solved, get it. So you, we both agree, you both agree to it. And to me, I understand the longevity to it, I don't know if ten years is. Maybe a five year renewal every five year, ten years is quite a ways out. My concern honestly is that. We get back to two thousand. Three, four and five, when we are doing thirty some thousand tons a year in trash and. And trying to adjust the fee schedules and all that stuff to meet that demand. Five year contract would allow us to do that a little quicker. Or a ten year, we're, we're stuck with CPI and. We kinda got behind on some of that, in fact, one year I think we didn't even levy for solid waste and that, we found out later was. A huge mistake, we should have just kept levying and kept a. You know, a pretty substantial levy there, just to kinda build a base for those years that we get slammed with garbage.
And you're referring to the fee that the residents pay? Yeah, I, I can see where. It would be hard to.
But in order to protect you guys, I I wouldn't mind, my personally, this is just my, my personal thing is I wouldn't mind a five year contract.
Well, if we put this together, then basically that's what we would be. Doing is, I mean, yes, it's a little more than five years from this date, or from the actual. Uh, expiration date of twenty three, we would be adding. Five years and I don't know if that would.
Well, I think we have to honor the contract we have now. Cause we've already signed that, but at at that ti- at that point, unless you guys can come to a better agreement, then we can, we can certainly change this contract, but. Right now, we have to honor what we have. And I, I've seen in situations in the past where. You know, we used to take our trash down below the barn and burn it and everybody had burning barrels and we didn't have trash pickup and. Boy, it's a huge improvement from what we used to have twenty years ago, so. I don't wanna lose that, cause it's a great service.
Well, we enjoy doing it. I mean, it's a little tough in the winter sometimes, but we definitely. And a little tough in the spring, huh Jeff?
Okay, we're gonna move on. And was this an action item? It is. So I guess we don't need a motion. Uh, we'll just wait to hear back from you guys. So what do we want, a table it Doug?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we'll just, uh, once. We hear from Mr. Oki. And Scott, we'll get it back on the agenda.
All right. Next item on our agenda is road and bridge, Jeff McFadden, and you have some action items and I'm sure a few other little details.
Just we'll start at the top. Heard you talked to Skip about. Escape earlier. I still think that vehicle needs to be sold. With its age and everything. And we'll discuss. How we're gonna get another vehicle. Mid year for him if he needs another one.
Yeah, and I think that's the best way to play it. Cause with the virus, we don't know how much you're gonna need it. And the way we left with him is he could be in contact with you if they get to that point. I agree, this is a seventeen year old vehicle that's seen better days.
Sounds like they couldn't keep it started, that was their concern, they didn't take it because they didn't know if it was gonna die. Couldn't keep it charged.
Runs just fine in the summertime, but when it sits up there all winter long, that's when it doesn't start.
On the twelve yard sander, you already, you have another sander?
Um, buying another one, I've got it in the budget to buy a smaller one. This thing's huge, I mean it.
Too big.
It sticks out. Twenty four inches out the top of our. Ten yard. Twelve yard dump truck. Um, gonna get a smaller one. Cause this, this one here. We've seen the undercarriage of this truck deteriorate. Over the last few years with that much weight in it and it's top heavy and. When he does get stuck. Which every truck does, it just makes it that much harder to get back on the road. He doesn't go through twelve yards of sand in a shift. As he's plowing and sanding, putting salt down at the intersections, goes through about four yards.
You have pickups that do that too, don't you?
I've got, yes, so I've had one pickup down here, I just got another one set up for Lake Fork. But there's nobody to drive it. So this one here, he's got the route that. Goes to the dump. It's all the main intersections coming on the highway around McCall that as he's plowing, he just. Put some out. Um, without somebody to be in that pickup specifically. After the plowing's done, it's just kind of a backup. Like on the weekends, I get a slick hill, slick intersection, instead of going and getting the twelve yard sander out of the shed with chains on it and a twelve foot. I'll mount it on the front. Any of my employees. Can go hop in this one ton pickup and go. Spread.
Probably a lot more efficient, a lot faster.
Lot more efficient. But I've got it in the budget to get, I don't know, we'll probably get like an eight yard. Sander for it. Something a little smaller, a little lighter weight, he goes back to the shop every night, so there's no reason to have something that big.
Jeff, these are all in this year's budget? Or we're gonna go ahead and surplus these and they'll be in your next year's budget to replace?
Uh, the sander's already in. In the budget, uh, the vehicle for. Juvenile is not. Those, those are the only things that I'm. Replacing. As of now would be. Vehicle for Skip and the sander. But I already, I already planned last year to get a smaller sander for one of our dump trucks, so it's already in the budget for this year.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion then that we authorize road department a surplus of two thousand four. Ford Escape, a triple axle CPS belly dump, a twelve yard standard spreader. Case roller and a homemade lowboy. Who didn't say, any more discussion? Not in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries.
Um, just a quick update on our other stuff, um, I'm dealing with Western Federal Lands again. You'll, you'll love this, after all this discussion on phase two of. Oh, you're gonna be so much over on this, you're gonna get money back. Now they're saying I'm twenty six thousand dollars short.
For which road?
One wagon road.
For one wagon. And those people don't have very good bookkeepers, do they?
Can they prove it?
That's, that's what I'm working on right now, I've got a phone conference with them at three o'clock this afternoon. I have found some match materials in my books down there that come up to about thirty five thousand dollars. Whether or not they've already. It can that is match two years ago, three years ago, I don't know. This has all kinda changed hands between. Jerry Curtis and me. And Western Federal Lands has made a total flip with their. Internal workings in the last two years, so it's. I don't know, just.
New people all the time, always a different person every time.
Different ways of doing things. I mean, I'm, I'm keeping track of the projects to a T that I have started from the beginning to finish and through the middle. But where there's been. Changeovers in the office manager, the superintendent's position. Changes over in Western Federal Lands, it's just. I mean, Dave was in those meetings. With me up there, oh yeah, you're gonna be. We'll take the overage here and apply it here and you're probably gonna get. You know, a big chunk of money back and last week it came up with, do you have any more match?
Need more money. Just stick to your guns on that because I don't think we're getting credit for everything that we talked about.
Or writing down your match for the time that you're talking to him on the phone about this.
Exactly. So that, that's kind of in the works, uh, we're getting bids out this week for. Uh, crushing. In Good Pit and paving. West Lake Fork Road Project. Waiting on numbers back from Western States on a. New paver and not a used one. With our buying power and a five year lease, we can probably get into it for. Right fif- forty five thousand, fifty thousand a year, and we'll end up with a brand new one with warranty and. I went down and ran it and it's, they don't make a paver any simpler than this. Um, waiting to hear back on prices on that. And I do have, I think I budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for a paver this year. If I can take that and make a big down payment and only leave, you know, maybe. Smaller payment next year and a smaller one the year after, however it works out. And if we do get the roller, then I'll probably still have to contract this West Lake Fork out, just. It's gonna be ready to go before the paver shows up if I do buy one. Um, that's already figured into the price. I rode this spring, took a beating as. Everyone of you drive on county roads at some point or another. Um, like Scott was saying, he's not sitting in here anymore, but he buried one of his garbage trucks up on Nasula. Last week. We had to get the big. Forty thousand ton wrecker out of New Meadows, come up and get him out, he just. One of those goo holes, call them jelly rolls, goo holes, whatever you wanna call them. This black goo just coming up through the middle of the road. They're all over the place this year. Nothing we can do with them. Right now, except get them marked, soft roads, whatever, and get people driving around them, or if they get bad enough, we'll. Have to figure out if we can close the road or not.
That time of year.
I think with. This warm, well, it's been windy last three weeks. Dried that top two, two inches of crust off these roads and I don't think. Road base was able to dry out, I think it just. Trapped that goo underneath it and then anything that runs heavy trucks on it's just. It's falling apart. My theory, don't know if it's right or not. While we were up there. Getting his, getting Scott's. Garbage truck out, I was talking to him about the recycled oil at the Murph. I guess they brought, bought a new double walled. Recycle. Container. Last year or the year before, so they wouldn't have to have a pit with it lined and everything. And he goes, yeah, we just, people drop their oil off and we just go over there and dump it in. Nine needles, antifreeze, dirt. So I, I'm still in the talkings. With him about that, see. The reason it doesn't go to the Valley for. Old recycled oil, whoever does that stuff. Is because it wasn't a big enough amount. I don't know. Somehow along the way, we need to get something bigger that holds. Ten thousand gallons. And then when that's full, it'll be mounted on a trailer and. Somehow it goes back down to a major recycle facility, I, I don't know. It's so contaminated, we're just. Our oil burner down here works just fine because we control what goes in it, but that one up there. We're just, I just can't take it anymore.
Well, there used to be a company that'd come and do that, but you had to have a lot.
A lot, yes, and that's what Scott was saying.
They wanted like, you know, a thousand gallons or more, kind of a deal.
I think they have a five hundred gallon tank up there, but it's not big enough for them to come up and get it. So I'll get with Scott and see what it's gonna take to. It's something big enough up there that's either on a roll off type. Trailer or. I don't know.
Keep working at it, something will present itself.
I just don't want it to get to the point where they're totally full. We're not taking it. And what are we gonna do? Start storing it in fifty five gallon drums? I, I don't know. Illegal to put on the roads anymore, so. Other than that, that's, that's about it, we're just. Getting ready to start on West Lake Fork here and.
Have you heard any more on the seven hundred grand from St. Knight or? East Fork?
Um, I got some pictures from Kyle. And, um. Looks like Mother Nature took care of some of that rip rap wall that I need to move. I don't know where those rocks came from, on what portion of the. Rip rap project, but they were. Non-native rocks. Strung across the snow slide. That they got punched open. Couple weeks ago. So some of, some of that rip rap wall's already gone. Whether or not it's in the area that I gotta go work on, I don't know.
And that's what's holding up the check?
No, oh, oh, it's holding up the check, sorry. Um, we're working on finishing the BA, the biological assessment. Um, Midas has. A lady working on that, again, to update it to the new. What the finished product's gonna look like. What we're gonna be doing. Once all that's in, it'll go back to. Army Corps and FEMA and then that'll trigger that. Money to start moving again.
Good, it'd be nice to see that check. Okay, any more questions for Jeff? We gotta move on. Are you good?
Nothing.
All right, thank you sir. We're gonna move on real quick on the rest of this agenda. Next item up is a presentation from Chief Deputy Prosecutor Brian Oki regarding the Idaho Supreme Court mask mandate. This is an action item. So Oki, come on up. Go ahead, Brian.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Brian Oki with the prosecutor, prosecuting attorney's office, uh. You had asked a question, I believe it was last week about the. The extent of the Supreme Court order re- requiring masks in the courthouse, I've done. Uh, done the research that you had requested and have just a. Really just a, uh. Uh, don't think I need the whole fifteen minutes, maybe help get back on schedule for you, but I did look into, uh. The Supreme Court orders, they've issued very, several, uh, across the, the past year. The most recent being in March advising the, uh, seven districts across the state to start to prepare for. Uh, resuming jury trials, but masks are still required as part of that order. And, uh, they rely on, really the Supreme Court relies on their own court administrative rules for these. For these orders. And the extent of those orders apply to the courthouse. The rooms that are associated with the court itself, so where the jury room is and where. Uh, those conference rooms are, conference rooms are, and then also extends to the clerks, uh, the clerk's office, so. That is the, as the extent and the scope of, of their order. Uh, which leaves the remainder of this building under your purview. Uh, to make a decision about how you would like to proceed with, uh, whether you wanna require a mask. Uh, for employees or visitors to this building or not. And without, I'm happy to answer any questions.
My concern, my question, I guess, is we got something from Pat this morning that was talking about this. If we take the mask mandate off in the rest of this facility. Are we liable if someone else gets coronavirus in this facility?
Well, um.
Be hard to prove, but.
Well, absolutely, I, I, I think that, uh, like all the decisions, the tough decisions you have to make as an elected official, you have to weigh the evidence and. Make good decisions and as long as you, uh, as long as you are reasonable in the way you approach that and that you have. Uh, you, you know, you rely on the data and the support, uh, the support behind it, then the ability for somebody to. Blame the county for, for that would be, would be limited and be a stretch.
And this is an action item, so what is your pleasure?
I think we need to set a date certain of when we're going to have everybody come back to work. That can come back to work, that feels comfortable to do so. We can entertain some remote working. Environments for those that feel that they are still physically at risk. But right now, whoever wants to get a. Vaccine can get a vaccine, they need to learn to protect themsel- or not learn, they need to protect themselves. And I feel like if we give a date certain, June first. like if we give a date certain, June first, that that's the date that we're shooting to take masks off here, then people still have the opportunity to go and get their vaccine. And I'm coming at it as a personal rights issue. I mean, it's, we have protected ourselves. Others in the courthouse need to do the same. We have put up all of our Plexiglas. We have hand sanitation available. We can still limit the number of people coming into the DMV to, you know, so that they can maintain a six-foot distance, so two at a time. So we can take some other things if we need to do that. That's my opinion. People are done with this. We need to move forward and get normal, as normal as we possibly can.
I don't know. Some of us are pretty abnormal.
And Mr. Chairman, you know, I guess looping back around to your question about liability. The law does require, as an employer-employee relationship, that if there is somebody that has a protected disability or some other risk, that a reasonable accommodation be made. And I think that the county has, has and should continue to make those, make those efforts or opportunities available for those that need those accommodations, as long as they're reasonable. You do have a requirement to provide that. The court, if you've, if you've taken the time to review the various orders that they have related to the courthouse have acknowledged that there aren't necessarily the same accommodations in a courtroom as you can in other, in other environments, because people that are in the courtroom are compelled to be there. And, and those are closer quarters, obviously, than, than others. So their, their orders went to great lengths to explain and kind of flush that out, that it was a unique circumstance in the courtrooms where, where people couldn't make the personal choice to, to come or even participate. You can't be a juror remotely. So, so, so there's some, there's some compulsory components to the, what the conduct that happens in a courtroom that's not necessarily the same for a place of employment.
So I would like to ask Doug how he feels about this since he's in charge of court clerks.
We don't have an option within the courtroom. That is, Brian indicated that that is a requirement within the courtroom itself. In the clerk's office, we have the ability to social distance, so it, we have not been wearing masks, but we do not have an option within the courtroom.
What about your court clerks here as far as taking fees? They have Plexiglas and all that there.
We do.
Pretty well protected.
That's correct.
My personal feeling is I think, because our numbers are zero, been zero for what, almost three weeks now, I think it's time to get back to normal in the rest of the facility. I think we have to follow Supreme Court ruling on the courtrooms itself. And I would like to start at the first of May.
I'm fine with first of May.
I would agree with that, but I also would think that we would continue to have masks optional available at the door. And then, as I've been moving around the valley and other places over the last few weeks, I've noticed that a lot of businesses have gone to a recommendation sign on their door. I would, you know, I'd like to see as a minimum that we say, we still recommend that you wear a mask, and then we leave it up to personal choice at that point.
Pat, do you want anything?
I think we need to be cautious a little bit, and the reason I say that is because we need to make sure that we're watching the science. We need to make sure that we're following what the science and what CDC is saying. Because we have an obligation, not only from the ADA standpoint, but to keep our workplace safe. And so we don't have anybody remotely working. The assessors have, can do it, but right now they're not able to because they're in the field. So they're in the office more. So we have nobody working remotely except for, that I know of, except for in Skip's area. So.
What about IT?
There's only one person, well, they are part-time, but they could come back in if they wanted to. So, you know, that becomes a production thing for them. Is it more productive for people to work from home than it does here? We have, we do have our telecommuting policy. So if somebody wants to telecommute, they, and their supervisor agrees with it, that's fine. But I just think we need to be cautious, and that's my only concern. Right now, yeah, we're at zero. But I can tell you that in Elmore County, that the school, everybody went back to school, and they've had an outbreak within the school, and they're full-time. And I recognize that's, that's Elmore County, and they are following the protocols. But I think we just have to be cautious and follow the science. One of the things that Fauci did say a week or two before, it wasn't last week, but the week before, he did say that, that, you know, they don't know a lot about the vaccines. So while we're vaccine, vaccinated, there's a lot of unknowns with it. One of the things that he commented as to why they're still, you know, really pushing the masks, even with the vaccinations, is that somebody could be exposed, be vaccinated, but be contagious because they're asymptomatic and not know it. So those are, those are things they don't know yet.
There was a report out, though, that you've been vaccinated, you can't carry it. That's the, the science. I mean, you follow the science. They say one thing one week and something else the next week.
I know it. I know. It makes it hard.
There is a lot of back and forth, but I just was going through some of the states around us, and I know Oregon right now is just seeing a surge in people who have gotten vaccinated. They're now getting infected with variants. But they're saying that even though they were infected, or excuse me, vaccinated for the original version, that it's mutating, 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 and now the variants are starting to mutate, and they're seeing people who have been vaccinated that are getting sick. And generally, it's a much more mild case. But, I mean, the law of genetics is that those things keep mutating until everybody's protected.
And I just, I just think we need to be cautious, you know. Yeah, we could recommend it, but what do you, the other thing to keep in mind is if we have somebody that brings it in because they're not vaccinated, and now they expose their whole department, now we've got a whole department down. So I would just suggest that you be cautious.
And that's my concern, Pat, is if we get to that point where we start getting a lot of reinfection, then we'll have to come back and.
Yeah. And, and we, you know, realistically, it may not be the Valley County people that we have to worry about.
No.
But we do have a lot of people coming from other areas and can be carrying the virus. Jim was commenting that, that DMV and McCall is an example. They're all from out of the area. So anybody that's Valley County is coming down here because they don't have to have an appointment.
Yeah, Plexiglas, and we've done everything we can to protect them.
We have. We have. It doesn't mean that it still couldn't happen. I, you know, I'm just, I just am suggesting that we be cautious and, and pay attention to what, what CDH's saying about it. I mean, they're recommending now, but still, we as an employer have to keep our employees safe, so however that looks. And we've done that with the Plexiglas. We've also done it with this. We've done it with saying, you know, stay with six feet apart and, and that. But maybe it's a circumstance where we still require the public to wear a mask when they come in. I don't know.
Well, I think we've done a great job educating people about the virus. And people have had, like Sherry said, have had a chance to get vaccinated for it. If they don't want to, that's their choice.
Right.
But sooner or later, we all have to accept responsibility for our own personal health.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
And I think the recommendation of a mask is a good idea. I think that's fine. And I think if someone feels that they are at risk, they haven't been vaccinated, they should put a mask on. Or if you can't socially distance that six feet. And I think we continue to try and push those types of things. So, you know, you check in at the front, you either continue to get a, an appointment, or, you know, you distance six feet when you're inside the building.
Well, and I think, you know, even the temp checks for the public coming in might still be a good practice.
Pat, it's never, I disagree with that totally because that was disproven right up front.
Didn't work?
No, it doesn't. People get sick all the time with it and don't have a fever.
Yeah. I never ran a fever. So I, I feel like that's just, you know, I think we're doing that just to feel good. It doesn't work, so. And I understand, Pat. I understand, you know, you are HR, and you are to protect people. And I, I agree. We are here to protect our employees, which we have done for a year.
Yeah.
If we say that we're gonna continue to wear masks until everybody's vaccinated, we could be here another year, and it's not acceptable.
And I'm, and I'm not even saying that. I, my biggest concern is just watching the numbers right now. And if the numbers were going down, I'd feel more comfortable. But they're, you know, they're stable or up, or stable or up. But they're not, you know, we're very fortunate that we don't have any here, but that doesn't mean that we won't, or that they're just not being reported. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's not my decision. I can, all I can do is, is tell you what my feelings are. But, and I wouldn't be opposed to even phasing them out either. I mean, maybe we look at, you know, okay, right now, the county's at, according to Star News, we're at fifty percent vaccinated. So maybe we look at, you know, the numbers and say, okay, when we get numbers sixty, seventy percent, then we will go away with it.
We don't really have the expertise to do that, though. That would be my only concern. I agree with you, Pat, is I like the idea of being conservative about moving forward and cautious. But I also, I think that we need to be able to readdress this as we get close to our busy summer season, as we see more visitors and tourists coming here. I think it's just something we continue to evaluate as it happens. And, you know, I mean, we certainly have the opportunity to, to make our, our choices about what we do in, in the courthouse here and protect our employees and the folks coming in.
Right.
And I would like to ask the sheriff how you feel about lifting it in the jail. That's always been my big concern, was the jail. Should we keep masking there? What's your feeling?
The staff masks when they go out into the hall.
So should we keep that practice going? They're gonna do that anyway?
They do test, you know, they do screen everyone when they're.
And they're in isolation until they pass that screen? So they get a COVID test when they are arrested?
They don't get a test.
Again, screening really doesn't do anything. I mean, is there a way that we can get one of the rapid COVID tests, and you test them when they come in, and that way you know that you're not, you know, allowing somebody in? Just a recommendation. That's what the schools are doing. I mean, they make the kids test before they go to every ballgame.
Really?
Why don't we test for people coming into the jail? Yeah. The school, McCall School, was donated a whole box of rapid COVID tests. I think we have to be careful, but I.
I think the jail is definitely something to consider. I mean, the idea of like a rapid test coming in, maybe they're in isolation until they get the rapid test, or they can get over to the clinic and get tested.
I would think that would be something that would be a good possibility. I know it's gonna be expensive. We'll have to pay those bills probably for some of those tests, but that's the worst place we could get it right now, is in the jail.
Medical bills for all the people in there would be more expensive.
Yeah.
Not only that, but a lot of it on, on any insurance is covering it right now. I mean, I think pretty much the COVID tests are.
Most of them are covered.
Right. Which is really a whole nother discussion someday. Okay, what's your pleasure?
I am ready to be done with the masks. We asked the employees last week. Everyone in this room that was an employee said, I am ready to move past this. We stopped because of the court issue, and I'm ready to be, to move forward. There is all kinds of challenges going on throughout the country, not only in, within this state. And we have, we have done our due diligence in a year and how many months? And I, I feel like it's a personal responsibility. If you feel like you need to be vaccinated, please do so. If you would like to wear a mask, please do so. If you join us, it's a recommendation that you wear a mask in the courthouse, but not a requirement, excuse me, in the county building.
Is that a form of a motion?
No, moved.
You want to have an ending?
I'd just like to ask HR one more question. Is, I was just curious, since we did kind of, you know, informal polling last week, a little bit about people who were ready to be done and felt comfortable being in their place of, or workspace. Did we have anybody, or have you talked to anybody that felt the opposite? I mean, is there anybody that we need to be concerned about that said, hey, I don't want to be in this space without people being masked?
Yeah, I know that there are some employees that weren't in this room that haven't had an opportunity to say one way or another. You know, it may be prudent if we really want to hear from our employees just to send a poll and find out what they want from that standpoint. And, you know, it doesn't have to be anything real big. But then we'd really get a feel for what the employees are feeling and their safety and not just thinking about a few people in a room. So just something to consider because, I mean, obviously, if they don't feel safe, they can certainly wear a mask. That's not what we're saying, that they can't, you know, they don't have to. Or they can always get vaccinated as well. But as you said, the vaccine is not, and as I feel too, the vaccine is not fail-safe. And, you know, it, it does go down, the efficacy of it does go down a little bit as, you know, time goes on. So even at six months, you're still not at the same level that you were when you first got vaccinated. So, you know, it is something to consider, but.
Do you guys be willing to wait for a few days and send out a poll to our employees?
How many employees are wearing their mask right now when they're in their offices? The time that they're wearing their mask is when they're in the hallway, correct?
When they're in the hallway, DMV wears their mask when they are waiting on people. Yeah, so any.
And we're not saying you can't.
No, as part of that, as part of, you know, their protocol, they do wear a mask. So most of the offices, I mean, the way we have it now is wear a mask or you're six feet apart. So that's, that's exactly the way we have it now. So, you know, from that standpoint, as long as we can maintain six feet distance, which we can. The only place that, that it really has been a challenge is in the hall, but that's incidental. It would be hard for somebody to catch it that way.
And you have to be with somebody for fifteen minutes before, you know, you're at risk. So passing in the hallways.
It's cumulative. So throughout the day. Anyway, that, if that helps.
Honestly, I've heard from more employees than not that they, they want to be done. They were done six months ago with this. And we've continued to push this and, and do everything that we can to keep people safe. But it comes down to some personal responsibility now, in my opinion. And I, I am ready to move forward with it. And if an employee has a concern, they can go to their supervisor, and we could address them one-on-one if, if they have, you know, something that, that they feel like needs to be addressed. And I'm putting in my motion that we start five-one first.
May first? Can you repeat your motion just so everyone understands it?
No.
Or maybe Doug, you can repeat what you motioned, or?
Mr. Mopin made a motion to remove the mask requirement in Valley County buildings and just have it as a recommendation for employees and the general public to begin May first, 2021.
With an opportunity to revisit, and I'll second it.
And let's put in there with an opportunity to revisit.
Based on the numbers and.
Based upon.
Increasing cases or.
An increase in cases in Valley County.
But this doesn't include courtrooms. We gotta stay, we gotta keep it for the courtrooms.
Correct.
I think we just, we'll have to make sure that we have signs at the courtroom door saying, you know, masks are required from here on.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Lloyd? Everybody good? Home in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Took a while to get here, but I think we'll be okay. We're all big grown-ups. We can handle it now. Okay. Next item on our agenda is an indigent hearing. So we're gonna go into executive session per Idaho Code 74-2061D. I need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make the motion. We go into executive session per Idaho Code 74-2061D.
Brought in second by Ro Call.
England aye.
Bob and aye.
Asbrokai and Doug are in at eleven-fifty.